I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the closed session. And the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of the single specific employees, and matters pertaining to an individual student. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, good evening. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please? Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dobrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mr. Kunkwitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Alright, thank you and good evening. Our next item is our state award winner. Dr. Small, thank you. Well, Director of Athletic Activities, Eric Winkowski, please join us and introduce administrators, coaches, sponsors, who are here to celebrate with us as we introduce our award-winning students.
Okay. Dr. Small, Board of Education, thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some future business leaders, some future healthcare professionals, some talented wrestlers, swimmers, and bowlers, and bowlers. Also here to help me tonight, support and honor their students, is Palatine Principal Tony Medina and Assistant Principal Ken Glazer, Front Principal Mark Langer, Athletic Director David Dick, and Assistant Principal Mandy Hughes, Conan Principal Julie Novak, Athletic Director John Kane, Shawford High School Principal Brian Harland, and Athletic Director Marty Manning, and Hoffman State's Principal Mike Alter and Assistant Principal Tom Mokon. Students, as your coach or sponsor introduces you, please step forward to the podium to receive your award. Additionally, I would ask that any parents and family members that are here, the students are present tonight, to please stand and be recognized when your student is introduced by their coach. Alright, so we'll start with our future business leaders. Conan High School, BPA. Matt Marks is currently in his seventh year teaching in Business Education at Conan High School. Matt is a sponsor of the Business Professionals of America, as well as a varsity tennis coach for both the boys and the girls. Matt is also a proud District 211 guy. Matt?
Will the BPA students please come on out? And then we'll call you up for any time.
I would like to start by thanking our Board of Education, Dr. Small, Mr. Winkowski, Mrs. Mikelski, Mrs. Novak, Mrs. Ardell, my co-sponsors Patty Erdl and Lauren Meldingore, and the parents of our awesome students. Business Professionals of America is a competitive academic club where District 211 members in all five schools compete in the following areas: finance, business administration, digital communication and design, and management, marketing, and communication. Seventy Conan students qualified to compete in this year's BPA State Leadership Conference this past March in one or more contests in those categories. Tonight, we honor Conan's first-place finishers from the conference. Out of nine hundred and fifty-three competitors from thirty-six high schools from the state of Illinois, Conan walked away with seven first-place finishes, seven second-place finishes, and four third-place finishes. Twenty-three students, twenty-three Conan students qualified in sixteen different events to compete at the National Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas this May. Now I will recognize the students and their parents in attendance this evening. Parents, please stand when I call your students' names. Our first award recipient is Sia Chavri. Sia received first place in graphic design promotion. Sia is here with her mother. Our second award winner is Ronit Anadon. Ronit received first place in digital media production. Ronit is here with her mother and father. And lastly, we have Angi Ram Nisundergal. Angi received first place in human resource management and first place in advanced desktop publishing. Angi is here with her mother.
Thank you.
Can you use the stairs right over here? This way.
Alright, now we'll go on to Front High School. David Strakowski is in his seventh year teaching in the Business Education Department at Front High School. David is in his sixth year as a sponsor of the Business Professionals of America. David?
Good evening. Before I introduce the students, I would like to say thank you to the Board, Dr. Small, Principal Langer, Mrs. Hughes, and everyone else from the district in front, who has encouraged the development and achievement of BPA over the years. The following students competed in the BPA State Conference this year and placed first in their event. Both of these students dedicated a substantial amount of time and energy preparing for their event, and I am honored to recognize and introduce these students and their parents who can make it here tonight. So first, here with his parents, Priya and Sin, is sophomore Disha Ramnuja, who placed first in fundamental spreadsheet application. Also here with his parents, Kubi and Shipra, is sophomore Aditya Gupta, who placed first in fundamental accounting. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Alright, now we'll move on to Hoffman State's High School BPA program. Tom McGam, Tom McGam is not available tonight, so Assistant Principal Tom Mokon will introduce the students. Tom?
On behalf of our BPA sponsors, I have the honor of recognizing our Hoffman State's High School BPA students for earning first place at their state competition this year. First, I'd like to recognize Junior Allison Prolocker, who earned first place in fundamental word processing with her mom Cynthia Prolock. Next, I'd like to recognize our group who earned first place as our parliamentary procedures team. Senior Stephanie Baranoff. Senior Kinjo Chohari. Senior Brandon Kim. Junior Isha Subramanian. Junior Dia Patel. Senior Arman Patel. And Senior Mira Patel. And I'd like to mention that this is the eighth year in a row that the Hoffman State's High School Parliamentary Procedures Team at BPA has come in first place at state. Congratulations, Tom.
Alright, now we'll move on to our future healthcare professionals. We're going to start with Palatine High School, and I'm going to choose Jennifer Dow. She is a biology teacher at Palatine High School for the last fifteen years, and this is her first year as a hostess sponsor. Jennifer?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, our superintendent, Dr. Lisa Small, for the invitation to recognize the accomplishments of our students today. I'd also like to thank our Principal Tony Medina and activities director Ken Glazer, as well as our support staff for all the continuous support and assistance they offer our students at Palatine High School. HOSA, the Health Occupation Students of America, is a group that seeks to promote leadership and knowledge in healthcare topics to better prepare students for careers in healthcare in the future. We are honored to have this opportunity to introduce Isha Baraga, who is accompanied by her parents, Dilip Sabu and Chinita Baraga. Isha is a junior at Palatine High School and is being recognized for her first-place finish in the veterinary science event at the Illinois HOSA State Leadership Conference. Isha dedicated a lot of time and effort toward researching techniques used in the field of veterinary science and practicing the skills she needs for form, in order to score highly at the state level. Her outstanding performance got recognition at the Leadership Conference, but she also entered the spot at the International HOSA Leadership Conference in June. We're proud of her accomplishment, so keep that in mind.
Okay, now to Front. Carissa Endrinopoulos is completing her twenty-first year of teaching science at both Palatine and Front High Schools. She has coached and sponsored various activities throughout her time in District 211, and this will be her sixth year as a hostess sponsor. Carissa?
Thank you and hello. It is a great honor that I am here to present to seven Front High School students that have shown outstanding dedication to continuous learning and a yearning for excellence in their endeavor to compete at states and in the upcoming HOSA International Competition in June. I'd like to first introduce Harani Afwali, here with her parents, Hreshali Afwali and Litesh. And Harani is a senior who placed first in the HOSA State for health career photography. Congratulations. I'd like next to introduce Nitya Devora, here with her parents, Ramdeva and Sarita Devora. Nitya is a freshman who placed first in the HOSA State for healthy lifestyle. Congratulations and good luck. Next, I'd like to introduce Debdua Mandal, here with her parents, Tanya Mandal and Samap Mandal. Debdua is a junior. She placed first in HOSA State for health informatics. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Tanya Kosla, here with her parents, Sarala Kosla and Manish Kosla. Tanya is a junior and placed first in HOSA State for MRC partnership. Congratulations. Next, we have Kanav Prasad, who is actually competing in another event tonight, but we wanted to go ahead and welcome him and congratulate him. He took first place and prepared speaking. And we wish him good luck, because I believe he's going to the International. Next, we have Letra Santokumar, here with her parents, Gita Wadakaw and Santio Gavendara Jual. Letra! The Medical Reserve Corps Partnership, and this is her second year, so congratulations to you as well. Last but not least, I would like to introduce you Alex Wang, here with his parents, Kings Wang. Alex, also a junior this year, and also played having place last year, placed first in HOSA State for judge of trauma. He will be attending internationals. Congratulations and good luck to you as well. To conclude, I would like to say what an honor it's been to be able to work with such determined individuals who are following their health science passions. I wish you nothing but the best in all of your endeavors, and of course, in international competitions coming up. I'm so proud of your accomplishments. Congratulations again and thank you.
And we'll finish up HOSA with Hoffman's HOSA team, as is coached by Nicole Brennan. Nicole Brennan is unavailable tonight, so we're going to bring Assistant Principal Tom Mokon back out for a second shot. Come on out.
On behalf of Ms. Nicole Brennan, a HOSA sponsor and science teacher at Hoffman, I'm honored to recognize our Hawks who participated in this year's state competition for HOSA in Springfield. I'll begin with the students who competed in their first state HOSA competition, Tanisha Paul, who finished first in the public health team event. Next, we have students who are in first place in their team event parliamentary procedures, Senior Kinjo Chohari. Senior Sude Ajay. Senior Medina Ashurova. And Senior Mansi Vagela. And lastly, we have Priya Srinivas, earning first place in pharmacology. Congratulations, Hawks.
Alright, so now we'll move on to the wrestlers. Jeff Keskey, Front Wrestling. Jeff is a wrestler, a wellness teacher at Front High School, and is in his fourth season as the head wrestling coach. Jeff is Coach Six All-Stater, well, a friend, and this year, Front won its first regional title since nineteen ninety-six. Jeff, please.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, Front's season was a story for one to remember. We couldn't have done without the support of our Athletic Director David Dick, our Principal Mark Langer, our entire coaching staff Miguel Gomez, Garrett Claviano, Mark Cherezov, Dan Solan, Connor Delmark, and Mark LeVoe. Tonight, we're here to honor our three All-Staters. Evan Gads, he's our first freshman in school history, he placed third. He had six individual tournament wins, and his only loss in the state tournament was in overtime. Evan Gads, come on out. Wiley Jessup was our state finals, first since twenty sixteen. He's a two-time All-Stater, he took sixth in twenty twenty-one. He beat the number-one seed at the state tournament, and he was selected to represent Illinois in the All-Star Juomi, representing the Midwest States. He'll be wrestling this weekend, his undecided where he's going to wrestle in college, but we'll be making a decision shortly. Charlie Fightfield, senior, misses his entire sophomore offseason, his entire junior year, his entire junior offseason, because he had two poor ACLs, came back his senior year, took fourth in state, got to his hundredth career win this year. He's a three-time regional champ, two-time pound champion, he's a sectional champ this year, and next year, he's going to be wrestling at the University of Illinois. Congratulations, Charlie. I just want to say thanks to the Board of Education for taking the time to honor our guys in our wrestling career, and we really appreciate it. And thanks to these three individuals, parents and their families, couldn't have done without you guys, and we thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Alright, now we'll move on to both the Conan boys and girls wrestling. Andrew Gilby is the coach at Conan High School, is in his fifth year as an English teacher and wrestling coach at Conan. This is Andrew's first year coaching the Cougars wrestling program, and he led them also to a regional championship.
First off, I'd like to thank the Board and District 211 for allowing me the opportunity to highlight the amazing student athletes that we have on our wrestling team at Conan High School. Furthermore, I'd like to thank our administration at Conan, specifically our Athletic Director John Kane, and our Principal Julie Novak. Their support of the program is one of the reasons why our program has been so successful. Speaking of success, as a first-year head coach, I'm not sure how much more I could have asked for. We had four conference champions, six regional champions that helped our team capture our first team regional title since two thousand and eight, and four boys state qualifiers, and our first-ever IHSA girl state qualifier. While our program had tremendous success, tonight, I'm proud to recognize three amazing individuals and their outstanding achievements. First, I'd like to introduce Manny Anderson with her parent Nancy Anderson. Not only was Manny our first-ever IHSA girl state qualifier, but she's also the first-ever IHSA girl state place winner, taking sixth at the inaugural IHSA Girl State Wrestling Tournament. Manny, congratulations. Up next, I'd like to introduce Henry Chang with his dad Marcus Chang. Henry was one of our senior captains that led by example, both on and off the mat. This was Henry's first trip to the IHSA Boys State Wrestling Tournament, and he made it college, picking sixth in state at the one hundred and ninety-five-pound weight class. Henry, congratulations. And finally, I'd like to introduce Ethan Stiles with his parent Gina Stiles. Ethan had an amazing season. He went thirty and one. He did not give up an offensive takedown all year, and became just the second wrestler in Conan history to be two-time state champion, as he captured the one hundred and fifty-two pound state championship this year. Ethan, congratulations. I'm incredibly proud of these three individuals and how they represent Conan and District 211. Thank you.
Alright, we finish up our wrestlers. We have Matt Bruska. Matt Bruska is in his twenty-eighth year of teaching and coaching at District 211. In the last fourteen years, Matt has served as the mathematics department chair. Matt?
Thank you. Thank you. So this was the first year of the IHSA sanctioned girls wrestling, they had their own state tournament, and people would ask, well, what's the difference between boys and girls? And not much, okay? I mean, when they go out there, they're off of blood. The difference is, they'll follow Instagram, they'll like, you know, be talking to one, I mean, they'll be making best friends. But I tell you, when that whistle blows, they're going at each other. The whistle ends, they're like, oh, you okay? It's amazing. But, you know, this season wasn't his last. I have two young ladies here at the Academy to have this year. I have Bethany Regioni with her mom Berdet. So Bethany is a senior, she finished the season with twenty-eight wins and twenty-two of those by pin. She won five tournaments, was an MSL conference champ, she was second in sectionals, and she was fifth in the state of Illinois, in the first-ever IHSA state tournament, and she will wrestle next year in college, and I think her better days are ahead for Bethany. Next up is Valerie Rodriguez with her mom, Apimania Cruz, and dad Elzardo Franco. Val, currently a sophomore, finished the season with thirty-two wins and twenty of those by pin. She won six tournaments, won the sectional championship, and placed third in the state of Illinois, and she was also voted the MSL wrestler, girl wrestler of the year this year. Val?
Alright, now we have a bowler to recognize. Ruben Inomosa. Ruben has been teaching wellness at Front High School since two thousand and one, where along with bowling, he has coached golf, gymnastics, and wrestling. Ruben started coaching bowling in two thousand and thirteen, and the following year, he was hired as head coach. Ruben?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Great to see all of you. At this time, I'm going to introduce you to my assistant coach. He has coached Ellie for the past two seasons, and I think that he would be best to give Ellie the recognition that she has earned. So here's Paul.
Thank you. Ellie is Ellie Benson, is here with her dad Jim Benson. We also wanted to make sure to recognize the JV2 coach Laura Winkleman, and Ellie, one-to-one teammate for bowling, Kelly Thorson, as well as the support of Mr. Langer, Mr. Dick, and Special Education Department Chair Mrs. Medina. Ellie is a sophomore, and at the time of the state meet, she had just been bowling competitively for fifteen months. This year, she finished in the top twenty in the Mid-Suburban League JV Conference, and then after that, she competed in the IHSA wheelchair division for the state series. Ellie took first in our regional at Beverly Lanes, and then moved down to the state meet, where she competed against all the other girls in the state meet that competed in the state meet two years before. And so it was really awesome that Ellie took third place at the IHSA state meet in the wheelchair class. And just for frame of reference, when Ellie's bowling, Mr. Thorson puts the ramp up on the approach, and then everything that happens after that is Ellie. She adjusts the ramp, aims, pushes off the ball for all her own shots between first and second, she makes all appropriate adjustments to pick up squares, and she did a great job this season, and just a sophomore, and with four to two more years with Ellie on the bowling team. So congratulations.
Alright, and we'll finish up with some swimmer. With Andrew Adams at Front High School, is currently a middle school, social studies teacher, and the head boys swim coach at Front. This is Andrew's third season as the head coach at Front High School. Andrew?
Hi, good evening. I'm here with Sean Grady and his parents Patrick, Aaron, and his little brother James. Sean competes in the IHSA's Athletes with Disabilities category due to right-side weakness stemming from mild cerebral palsy. Working with our assistant coach Teresa Gilecki this year, Sean was a sectional champion in all four of his events that he competed in. That qualified him for the IHSA State Swim Series, in which he finished fourth in the two-hundred-yard free, third in the fifty-yard free, fourth in the hundred-yard free, and fifth in the hundred-yard breaststroke. It's also worth noting, he's not here today, but Jaden Hyland and his mother Jennifer. Jaden is currently in Orlando, swimming at Nationals for USA Swimming. He was a seventh in state for the two-hundred-yard individual method.
On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all of our students, and thank you to the parents and the teachers and all the support and the coaches for supporting our young people. And a special thank you to the students, because of all the time and dedication that you put into it, it's quite a commitment, and you are just amazing young people. So again, I thank you very much. Thank you for being with us this evening. We're going to take just a few minutes, allow you to leave, so we'll be taking some photos up in the main hallway. I think we're doing downstairs. Okay, down through here, and then they'll take some group pictures. So at this time, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our board meeting, but if you'd like, you're welcome to leave also. And we'll just take a couple minutes break, so everyone can leave.
My name is Thad Wagner. I am a resident of District 211 and a taxpayer. And I had two sons graduate from Front, and one will be starting their next spring. I'm sorry, fall. Well, first off, I always want to start with talking about the finances. And I know on the event today, the resolution abating the tax recapture levy for 2021 taxure. What I, first of all, I want to thank Peter Dabrowski. He has put out a lot of information, not only to the public, but in meetings. And he's done a lot of study, and I would ask that everyone really take the time to listen to what he has to say. And with that, we don't want Mark to be asking a lot of questions. And so what I want to say is that, you know, there's always two sides to every issue. There's some people on one side, and the other side. And I respect that. But what I don't really respect is people who hide behind the superintendent or hide behind the unions and are afraid to make a courageous vote and just want to vote to get the discussion over. And so what I ask of you is to really use common sense, listen to both sides, and choose what you believe is right, not what you think is expedient. And today, you know, if you look at today, families are struggling, inflation is rising. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense not to approve a, you know, the highest recapture we can do, I'm sorry, the highest abation of tax levy we can do. And with that, I think, you know, the school board needs to consider tightening the valves and keeping taxes as low as possible. Okay, then I want to address what's been said over and over every single month about the Proud Boys, about conservative ideas. First of all, I've not seen a single, well, I don't know a single Proud Boy. I don't think there has been any Proud Boy at a meeting speaking. So if you know of one, name them. Secondly, as far as conservative movement, not movement, the conservative ideas, have you been out talking to families? Are there common sense ideas that we want? We want accountability of the schools and parents. We want to uphold values that we have and own in the schools. We are not asking for, we're not asking for extreme measures. And so I honestly, those comments about Proud Boys and extreme discussions are hogwash in my mind. Thank you.
Maria Gallow, followed by Tracy, I believe it's Boland.
Here we go. Hello, and thank you to the school boards for allowing this opportunity to speak. My name is Maria Gallow. I'm a resident of District 211, and I've lived here for 26 years. It's been two years since COVID hit, and schools all over the country switched to teaching online. This is a hard decision that nobody wants to repeat. Online learning is very hard for students and teachers. It's isolating and lonely. For those students who don't own laptops or who don't have Wi-Fi at home, or who have to babysit younger siblings also at home while their parents are working in frontline jobs, it's nearly impossible to keep up with their classes. But what has impressed me through this whole time is that the teachers did not give up on their students. Some of the teachers had to ramp up their technology overnight to continue to provide an education to their students. They all had to try new ways to engage their students, reach out to the ones who weren't showing up online, staying up late, writing emails to parents and students, switching lesson plans in the last minute to accommodate the different needs of online learning, troubleshooting when online practice didn't work, networking with each other, learn new strategies, long phone calls with concerned parents. And like the rest of us must have not known, wondering if the pandemic would end. They have been living with the worries and fears for their students. No matter what, teachers kept teaching. This district is blessed to have hundreds of teachers who have made the commitment to devote their lives to teaching other people's children. They have been doing it during a pandemic, through sickness, and quarantine, and masks. And what is the thanks they get? Harassment by outside groups and politicians who are trying to make a buck or get some publicity or further their own religious fears, whether it's over vaccines or masks for the future of human history. We need to remember that public school teachers are educating our teacher leaders. The future of our country depends on having leaders and citizens who are ready to tackle the problems of society. I drive pens from high school pretty often, and several months ago, I noticed something I'd never seen before, a huge sign for other health-wise initiatives. This is where it gives you a comfort if you don't have enough people to teach the students that you have. The Daily Herald and The Tribune reported last week on a report of force and staff shortages. Eighty-eight percent of districts have a shortage of full-time teachers. Ninety-six percent of districts have a shortage of students, of substitute teachers. And a majority of people in the state agree that schools should, that funding for schools should increase, and that teachers and education support staff like bus drivers do not change up.
Your speaking time is over.
So please consider this. We need to pay attention to this report. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Tracy Boland, followed by Rohan Namuthiri.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. My name is Tracy Boland, and I'm a resident of D211. I do not have any children in the district. Thank you, Dr. Small, and board members, for allowing me this opportunity to share my thoughts. Oliver Wynn Holmes Jr., a Supreme Court Justice from 1902 to 1932, famously said, "I like paying taxes. With them, I buy civilization." I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the civilization we buy with our taxes here in the D211 district. We buy top-notch elementary schools. We buy well-maintained streets and functioning sewers. We buy well-trained firefighters. We buy a campground in the forest preserve, food security for our neighbors, and part of district swimming schools. We buy one of the best community colleges in the state, if not the nation. We buy free books, music, and movies at our libraries. We buy mosquito abatement, responsive police, and multiple senior centers. We buy public transportation, park district horseback riding, and delicious, clean drinking water. We buy well-kept cemeteries, housing security, golf courses, gymnasium, athletic fields, and pickleball courts. And of course, we buy some of the most respected high schools in all of Illinois. I was dismayed at January's board meeting to see a financial forecast document that used the phrases "tax burden" and "tax relief." High-quality schools, and attentive senior centers, and clean drinking water are not burdens.
Yeah, the women have been...
They are not necessarily evils. They are objectively good. They are desirable outcomes that we, as a community, have decided to focus our resources on achieving and maintaining. When you use phrases like "tax burden" and "tax relief," you are undermining our collective commitment to these good outcomes, these shared goals. Now, it's probably too high in the sky for me to ask that when you are talking about tax policies for the district, you use phrases like "tax blessing" or "tax accomplishment" or "tax yippee, our schools are awesome." Phrases that affirm our shared values. That's probably too high in the sky. So instead, I will request that when you are discussing tax policy and sharing documents that are public, you use descriptive, neutral terms like "tax payment," "tax increase," and "tax decrease."
You're speaking time is up.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Rohan Namuthiri, followed by Pyle Merdy.
What's the next person?
I beg your pardon?
Rohan has left, but I'm here. Pyle, my name is Pyle.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pyle, and I'm a resident of Palatine. And my son is a junior in Palatine High School. I'm here with fellow parents of the other juniors. We are here to request for the course M448 Mobile App Development that was denied at Palatine High School. The minimum enrollment required for this course is eight students. We have 10 students enrolled for this course. We had sent emails to superintendent, and the response was not supportive at all. So with these 10 students, they are quite serious, and this is a technology course which is much needed. The school does not require any extra resources. This course was offered at Palatine High School in the past with 12 students. So we are here in front of you to just request to reinstate that school. They will be senior next year, and they are quite serious to do, to take this course again at M448. So the response was that the course will be offered at Front High School, and these kids are supposed to go to Front in the morning to take the course. And all of these students are 80 students. They have early bird classes, and they have various clubs in the morning. And then in the evening, they have their tennis and other sports. So they don't have time in their busy schedule to go to Front. And because Palatine High School already has everything that is needed for this course, we request you to talk to the superintendent to offer this course to these students and give them the equal opportunity that Front has. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Juanita Verdi.
She left too. They are kids, they are children who are for this course.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then I have Dr. Dan Fadrazza, followed by Kristen Steele.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Dan Fadrazza here. Thirty-two years, nervous here with teaching management. Thirty-two years, nervous years of teaching back here at, well, I started at Palatine, the old Palatine building in Shamar High School. And two of my kids went through the system. I'm very pleased. And you'll be happy to know, I have no politics. And my father lives in a program that costs nothing. So I'm pretty well covered on both of those things. And yet, with those things in mind, I have one of the most important programs that I can imagine. It has to do with developing psychological resilience in children. And we saw today the top 1% of the students, but I'm here to kind of represent 99% that may have mental illness of some sort, at least mental challenges. I'm talking about depression, anxiety, suicides. And I've been involved with families, because I represent families, in those situations. I will say that it's mostly in early childhood, but I know that some of the board members are connected to School District 5415. And I'm here because it takes the community to raise a child. So I am asking all of you, as an invitation, to maybe join some meetings this summer as we try to get some programs going and some pilot studies with these things. I have published articles, peer-reviewed published articles, and I might be standing here as the only person that has a system for developing psychological resilience in children. There's a lot of research, but there's no So maybe I'll just leave it at that. Maybe if I just drop off, with your permission, can I give you Mr. Rosenblut and use Mr. Rosenblut in the contact? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Steele, followed by Sharavan Natrajana.
Miss Steele. Good evening. I would like to address this Board of Education and the topic of how the seven of you interact or do not interact with the community in which you were elected to serve, most notably social media. Many of you do not interact with the community at all on Facebook, and that is absolutely your choice. It is not a necessity. A few of you have taken to posting videos to get your message out in more concise manner. It can be effective and useful. However, Facebook can also be very divisive, as well as to perpetuate false information and hurt others. It is no secret that one Board of Education member, Mr. McGowan, is more active than the rest of the six BOE members are on Facebook. His material has been seen as divisive and only serving a small portion of the community that may have elected him. He has made it clear what his interests are, as he has made it clear who he does and does not support, both from a personal as well as political standpoint. I point this out because as a Board of Education member, one is not supposed to endorse any person politically. Sorry, my phone's on. He has made it clear what his interests are, and he has made it clear who he does and does not support, both from a personal as well as political standpoint. I point this out because as a Board of Education member, one is not supposed to endorse any person politically, as he has done exactly this by endorsing his former campaign manager, Nabila Saidi. Actually, to be fair, Mr. McGowan, Mr. Rosenblut, and Mr. Bradley all endorse Ms. Saidi as D-211 School Board members. Strangely enough, in fine fashion like many posts, the image and post Ms. Saidi made about this has disappeared. I do have record of it, though, should anyone desire to see it. When this was brought up to both D-15 and D-211 Admin and Board of Education Presidents, a response was not, was received from D-15 Board of Education President, and I believe that is why the post was removed, as she stated that was very much against board policy. No response was received from D-211. Mr. McGowan has made it a habit to remove comments from his public Board of Education page and block individuals from posting on his page. While this does not violate anyone's policy specifically, I find it quite interesting and sad that an elected official picks and chooses who he wants to engage with, the question he wants to answer, and if it doesn't fit his narrative, it goes unanswered. His videos have made it clear that he sees everything through the lens of color and equity. He has accused another Board of Education member publicly for his stance regarding hiring of teachers and implicit bias. In one video in particular, Mr. McGowan mocked parents and was very condescending. While this did spark a lot of conversation, it was also divisive and full of lies. In a post prior to the aforementioned video, Mr. McGowan talks about a situation that occurred at the close of the last Board of Education meeting. This post was filled with wrong information and a few lies too. He claimed to not know the person that asked to be walked to their car when in fact he knows her well.
Ms. Steele, your time has ended. I can't, I can't hear. The time has ended. The three minutes has ended.
Great. I'll submit these so that you can see them, and I will expect an answer.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sharavan Natrajana.
Hi, my name is Shwamnath Adhan. I'm here on behalf of the students wanting to take mobile app development in Palatine High School. I've been on the comm side track at PHS for about two years now, similar to a lot of the other students hoping to take this course. And similar to the other students hoping to take this course, we're all hoping to educate ourselves in programming and computer science for a better chance in the comm side of the world. However, our hopes were nipped in the bud recently. We were told that we did not have enough students to run the class, and that we needed a minimum of eight students. And by some miracle, we managed to meet it. And furthermore, we surpassed it with 10 students. But the lack of students shouldn't have been an issue since the requirement, sorry, since we met the requirements set by the district. But we were still denied the ability to pass. Even further, the math class differential equations in PHS has, if I remember correctly, three students. This class, we needed eight, and we hit 10. And yet, we were still denied the class. And just to later discover, for example, Friend and many other schools in the district have this class running, in fact, multiple periods of this class. Friend has five of periods of this class running, and we were told to just go to Friend in the morning. But many of us have things we have in the morning. We have classes, we have clubs, and it's just impossible to balance it all. And this, it just seems crazy to me, since D-211 policy is no student left behind. But this is just the same as us being left behind. We aren't being given the same chances as other students. We're being denied the opportunity to educate ourselves at a higher level. We as students are just trying to educate ourselves and ensure ourselves a successful future, which I feel to be the whole purpose of school. So I would like to plead to you one more time. Please, please let this class run at PHS. Thanks so much for the time.
Next to Karen Wagner, followed by Safaya Kataranya. Okay, Ms. Wagner is first.
My name is Karen Wagner. I've lived in the district for 42 years. My daughter's graduated from Friend High School. I'm also a retired teacher from Shamar. I want to thank the members of the High School District 211 Board of Education for their dedication and professionalism in light of these challenging times. The last two years have been tough with mask wearing and vaccinations only adding to your stress. I admire how you all have stayed strong and continued with your responsibilities as elective representatives, with the only reward being that of knowing you remain true to your promises to the community. I do have doubts about the lifting of the mask mandate. I remember when we had measles vaccine mandatory. Cases of measles almost disappeared. We didn't stop vaccinating for measles. The vaccine was the reason that case numbers fell. I believe the same about masks and vaccine. Masks and vaccine are why the cases of COVID are down. I worry that without these precautions, we'll see a resurgence of COVID. I so hope I am wrong. With masks becoming optional, I also worry about those who chose to keep wearing a mask. I ask that those without masks do not bully those with masks. Just as some have achieved their freedom and right to go mask-free, I hope that they will give others the same freedom and right to wear a mask. I'm also very concerned about the seeming abandon of societal norms. There are those who refuse to let their views succeed and fall on their own manage. They feel unacceptable to threaten and harass those who have different views. They want to punish those with different views. Without those views are presented at school board meeting or expressed by voting for a particular candidate in an election. When differing opinions are not respected, our very way of life is threatened. Our democracy is in peril. I fear for our nation's future. I hope we can come together and work for the best opportunities for all. We don't need to punish another in order for our goals to succeed. We should make it possible for everyone to succeed with freedom and respect.
Ms. Kataranya, followed by Sumanya Chote Karakura. I apologize for the mispronunciations. Sir.
I'm Satya Narayanan. I'm 21, live in this district for 20 years, and my kids are going to Palatine High School. I am again to talk about the mobile app class. And most, we have, as a couple of people have talked about it, we have eight students required, and we have about 10 students at this point of time. And definitely, we recommend or we request you to have this class. As we know, computer industry is one of the major ones. In computer, digital, and data are the two future of it. And that in digital means it is mobile app. It's one of the major things which is required for every student in the future. So definitely, I like, I request every you to consider to, for the Palatine School, to have one class on that. Because it's traveling to Friend School in the morning is not practically feasible with all these other classes they have. So I really request once again on the same, to consider and have the class. Once we have this class, okay, in Palatine, the people are going to grow. The siblings and other people are going to come back here, and the number of students is going to grow. So please consider once again, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sumaya Chotakura. I'm a resident of D-211, and I have two kids going to Palatine High School. Just emphasizing with other parents and with our peers, as you mentioned, because about the M448 mobile app course. I just want to let you know my perspective. I work in the ITC. We do the hiring, mentoring, and training of interns. I have kids who come freshman year from college, kids who have taken computer science classes from high school. A super potential, the foundation had already been made. So it's so much easier for them to advance forward. In one year, I've seen some of the kids code bots, artificial images, learn so much. So this is an opportunity that's already offered at the school, and the kids are interested. They have the resources. Everything's available. Just to emphasize on a request, please have this class. Let the kids, give the kids an opportunity to learn. This is the age of computers. Everything now is, even the learning has been computerized. Mobile app is something that kids already should have a hands-on experience, and if the school is offering it, why not take advantage of it? That's the humble request for you guys to reconsider and have this class at PHS. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next to you, followed by Joyce Slavik.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kim Pickerman. I have three kids at Friend High School, and I've also lived in the district for 46 years. I have three things that I would like to discuss this evening. First of all, I've not been to a meeting in a few months, but I have been watching them online. I am so tired of listening to people at these meetings getting up and calling conservatives, Trumpers, anti-maskers, anti-vaxers, we're extremists, we're Proud Boys followers. I don't even know what Proud Boys are. I honestly have no clue what even people are talking about when they're talking about that. They're also saying that conservatives don't follow the science and that we don't care about other people. Kim, you have been quoted as saying, "I'm a person who cares deeply about my community and about the young people who live in it." This sounds super sweet and nice. You also tweeted that those who vote for Trump would be choosing to make the United States a white, national fascist state. So I am a conservative. I voted for Trump. So are you implying that me and half the residents of D-211 are equal to that of Hitler? Is that what you mean? So considering that I don't believe that you understand what conservatives believe or stand for, I thought I would give you a little lesson. Conservatives believe in small government. We believe in small regulation. We believe in lower taxes. We believe that these three points allow anyone in the United States to live the way that they want and to give them the freedom to live and to live the way that they want to. Would you like to know where I learned that from? As I had told you guys months before, and you probably do not remember, I graduated from Friend High School. That is how it was taught to me in my 1989 to 1990 senior year in my social survey class. Friend High School is who taught me those values.
Your one minute remaining.
Okay. 50% of Friend is conservative, and a very part of large popularly of the D-211 is also. Why, and Kim, I would really like to know, after making a harsh statement as you did, please explain to me, and I would like an answer, why we should trust you with our children? Why should we put our faith in you that you will make the best decisions for our kids? I'm going to personally invite you, and Kim, I'm going to invite you also, because there was a video that you put up online that you commented and said and called our children ignorant little white boys. And I have been talking to some parents about this, and we have a group of us. I have the videos, so don't sit there and shrug your eyebrows at me. I have a group of parents that we would love to meet with the two of you. And Kim, as you're saying with your videos that you put after the meetings, that you were all
Your speaking time is over.
We're all in the same group. We all should work together and be as one. Then you know what? Then, Amber, we need to hear your thoughts.
Your time has ended. Thank you very much. Joyce Slavik, followed by Chote Karakura.
My name is Joyce Slavik. I'm a parent in this district. I also support the mobile app concept held in High School on the Capitol Hill. At the last school board meeting held on February 17th at Conne High School, I thanked our teachers for the amazing work that they do. They deserve our gratitude and to be rewarded for that work. Public education and public educators are an important part of our community. At the meeting, I also spoke about a person who's not in our district making multiple FOIA requests, four in fact. And one of those requests, yes, for every email and communication from the district administrators to the Board of Education over a three-month period. I considered that to be a waste of our district's resources and our taxpayer dollars. Anyone does have a legal right to make FOIA requests, but for someone to make those kinds of blanket requests to the school board is troubling, even if she lives in our district. And I know she lives in Bartlett because FOIA requests are themselves public information and are actually included in our agenda. I encourage people to take a look at the agendas over the month and see who's making requests and what they're asking for. With that meaning, my friends chose to leave after the public comments, but I stayed for the rest of the meeting as I like to hear what occurs during the business parts. As I sat alone in the Conne High School auditorium, someone rushed past me, sat right next to me. I moved over two seats with my mask. She did not have one. My co was on my right. She moved over as well. She told me she knew who I was, gave me my street address, and told me she had made multiple phone calls to my cell phone, from a hidden number, it turned out to be four. She warned me, "You don't know who you're dealing with," and she told me to watch out. I took her picture as a safety measure, and she continued to try to engage me. I told her I was watching my school board meeting and I was listening. She said that she would be waiting for me outside after the meeting. If this had been you, your wife, your daughter, I expect you would have been alarm-winding threats. I know I was. But the meeting concluded. I immediately went to the stage and told the board I'd been threatened. and told the board I'd been threatened to mask for an escort to my car. Multiple board members did not hesitate to escort me. I thank Kim Cavill, Tim McGowan, Curtis Bradley, and one of the administrators.
We have more than a term.
They are truly public servants, and I thank them for all the good work that they do. Rising organizations give training and templates for filing FOIA requests for the purpose of harassment and base must cause through lawsuits. For example, threatening as part of a conservative group, Lake Illinois, promotes privatizing schools and attacks teaching honest, accurate history. Do you think the threats that are to school boards in our districts are not happening? You're not paying attention because they are. Well, talk disparaging about gender pronouns and use terms like parental rights and transparency. They'll sound great, don't they? Until you listen closer, and what they really want to do is force their views on all students and kill discussions on race and gender equity, identity. All students deserve a benefit from an honest, accurate education. No one should have to endure threats and intimidations to serve on the school board or speak publicly. There's no place for threats and bullying to school or school or community. And I call on all board members to ban all this kind of behavior.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, Amy Nelson, followed by Kathy Rizberg.
Good evening. I have a few different topics that I like to address tonight. I'm going to try and talk briefly so I can get through this. First, I want to talk about board members' use of social media. We have a couple of board members who use Facebook pretty regularly. Both of them take some written abuse from community members who might have disagreements with them on what's been posted or sharing the video. However, only one of them, Mr. McGowan, has removed or hidden comments that are unfavorable and proceeded to block people from being able to react or comment on his page. I'm here to express my disappointment in you, Mr. McGowan, because I understand that people can be repited in their criticism of you and the district. I believe Mr. Denbrowski can also attest to that. I see posts on his page as well. But I've never posted anything to you on your page, positive or negative, on your board page. And yet you have seemingly preemptively blocked me from being able to react or comment. Is this your way of getting back at me for sticking it to you or something because we've disagreed on multiple issues in the past? We've had many private conversations. I don't understand why you're blocking. I didn't do anything on your public board page. Moving on. I listened to people talk out of one side of their mouths about the damage coming from disinformation, all while spewing their own disinformation out of the upper side. In a past meeting, there was someone who claimed that Tennessee had made it illegal to teach black history. It is not correct, and that's been confirmed by politifact.com. It's been said that anti-masker parents won, so let's put that same energy and focus on other more important issues. I'm here to remind everybody that over the past two years, parents have been addressing the board regarding students' mental health, SAT prep, curriculum policies, academic inequities between our district schools, as proven by this class that they want to have at PHS, property taxes, the levy, and diversity hiring, to name a few. We are able to multitask. Next, money. Embedded on page 15 of the Facilities and Capital Improvement Update, which will be presented tonight, is the plan to use the $18 million budget surplus to upgrade the auditorium, CPA system, and HVAC improvements to the applied tech classrooms. Is this a budget surplus or is it proceeds from the land sale? I'm just a little confused. Maybe that will get explained later. And last taxes and the levy. During the discussions about the levy, Ms. Cavill, your argument has been against lowering it because it affects us in perpetuity. Just a reminder, that does work on the other side as well. If we take the maximum every year, it keeps going. It keeps going. And, you know, I'm just asking that you please consider doing the right thing for our community that is struggling from two years of financial distress due to COVID. Please do not take the max going forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Rizberg, and as a District 211 taxpayer, I want to thank you for giving me and my fellow community members a chance to speak at these months in the board meetings. As a parent, I stand here tonight to express the deep sense of appreciation my husband and I both have towards the District 211 Board and all the educators in this district. We are so grateful for the emotionally and physically safe learning environment our three children enjoyed it from high school and for the way the Fremd staff listened to us, partnered with us, to ensure that our children have both positive academic and extracurricular experience of Fremd. I also stand here tonight as an educator with 15 years' experience in both public and private schools. I want to thank you for putting my children and all District 211 students with the 21st century learning skills that are so essential for success in the workplace. Critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. I'm especially grateful that educators in this district understand the importance of teaching critical thinking skills. Those skills that teach all students to better discern the truth of what they read, see, and hear. These are the skills to recognize and reject all misinformation, the blatantly false information that's intentionally shared, recognized, and incredibly amplified on social media platforms and in public forums. Similar to what is happening in authoritarian-led countries around the world, disinformation in this country is typically used to cover up or distort the truth. Here in the U.S., it's also been used as a fear-mongering tool designed to mislead, confuse, create deep divisions within communities. It's even used as a recruitment tool of parents into far-right groups. Finally, I stand here tonight before you as a supporter and advocate for honesty in education. It's so good to know that I'm not alone in this room, in this community, in the state or country, in believing that all of our students deserve an honest and accurate education and the freedom to read books of their choice. Our students deserve to learn the whole of every subject, including history, even learning the facts and truth about a specific issue like racism in America allows our students and us as parents or community members to feel uncomfortable. Our students also deserve the freedom to learn about and readdress issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So my thanks again to all of you who serve on this board and in school boards across the country. And my sincere thanks to all of my fellow community members and everyone in this room who are willing to stand here tonight in support of honesty in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Our next item is a presentation on Facilities and Capital Improvement Update. There's been a longstanding commitment and expectation of High School District 211 to provide safe, functional, and adaptable facilities that contribute to the educational program and have a positive impact on student achievement. As a component of its financial and operational goals, the district's long-running capital outlay plan is designed to align with building utilization, improvement in maintenance schedules, and serve its educational goals. Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel and Director of Facilities and Purchasing, John Hummel, will present our Facilities and Capital Improvement Plan, including the progress in our 10-year facility plan and three additional capital recommendations for the board's consideration tonight.
Thank you. It is no small task to manage the facilities and grounds across our district on any given day. We have 160 dedicated operations and maintenance staff that are responsible for the upkeep of over 220 acres of grounds and 2.3 million interior square feet. In addition to the day-to-day upkeep, we prioritize larger capital improvement projects each year that are completed to preserve the health and safety components of our buildings and also include renovation of spaces that support the instructional, extracurricular, and operational programs of our district. Tonight, we will provide the board with an update on the projects that are planned for the coming summer, review the remaining projects or priorities to be completed as outlined in the district's strategic plan, and discuss additional projects that have been reviewed over the past several months, which would utilize a portion of existing fund balance. The district has been completing projects that were identified in the 10-year facility improvement plan since 2017. Tonight, we will focus on projects that are planned for summer 2022, including the health and life safety projects. And then we will transition into future project planning and considerations. The district's financial projection was presented to the board in January, and the capital improvement information from that projection will again be reviewed this evening. This information should be familiar to the board as it summarizes the projects that will prioritize in the strategic plan. Many of the projects have been completed on this list with the remaining projects that planned to be completed over the next several years. After this summer, our track and turf improvements, kitchen renovations, and restroom renovations will be complete across the district. Summer construction is right around the corner with work to begin in May. John will now share information on the planning considerations and scope of the work for our summer 2022 facility improvements across the district.
This summer, the cafeteria, kitchen, and Fremd will be renovated after more than 25 years in service. The kitchen remodeling project was identified in the 10-year strategic plan due to ongoing plumbing issues, poor production workflow, limited proper food storage space, inability to move food and supplies directly into the kitchen from the loading dock or hallway, limited food serving line capacity, and outdated equipment. The new kitchen has been reconfigured and expanded to increase productivity through more efficient workflow, provide redundant refrigeration systems within the walk-in cooler and freezer, accommodate the installation of new cafeteria, I'm sorry, installation of new cafeteria, providing the opportunity to create new entrances in the serving lines, which will be much more modern inviting to the students, replacement of mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire suppression systems, new commercial kitchen equipment renovation and expansion of student serving lines, which will provide flexibility to accommodate current and future menu considerations. This summer, the contractors will complete the second phase of a two-phase project to renovate the final six student restrooms at Palatine and four student restrooms at Fremd. Many of the restrooms were original to the buildings and have simply exceeded their useful lives. The restroom model includes all-new plumbing within the restroom footprint, new plumbing fixtures, updated ventilation, energy-efficient lighting, composite toilet partitions, ceramic floor and wall tile, automatic faucets, and electric hand dryers. Each of the remodeled restrooms are ADA compliant. And in addition to the remodeled student restrooms, Palatine and Fremd have received three new ADA compliant privacy restrooms at each campus. As part of the Fremd cafeteria, kitchen remodeling project, three additional staff restrooms will be rebuilt similar to the renovated student restrooms this summer. Most of the demountable walls will be replaced at Palatine over the next two summers. The demountable walls are pre-made metal panels which are constructed similar to office partitions. These panels are approximately half the thickness of a standard wall with minimal sound control properties. Additionally, the panels are installed to the underside of the ceiling grid. The installation to the ceiling grid allows the walls to move slightly as doors are shut and objects and people bump into the panels. An additional issue with the panels only extending to the ceiling is the sound is able to travel up through the ceiling tiles into adjacent classrooms and spaces. New walls will be constructed with steel studs, drywall, and sound attenuating insulation. The walls will extend from the floor to the underside of the floor or roof deck above. The combination of the drywall, insulation, and installation fully to the underside of the deck above will work to greatly reduce the ability for sound to travel from one room to the next. The result will be an improved classroom learning environment by reducing background noise. Currently, many of the doors in the area with demountable walls are difficult to open and close due to the shifting of the ceiling, which holds the upper portion of the wall assembly. The new wall configuration will significantly improve the structural integrity of the walls and the new door assemblies, increasing safety and overall operation. The roof replacement at Fremd for summer 2022 is highlighted in yellow. The roof sections are currently 34 years old and reflect the relative age of the majority of the roof sections being replaced this summer. We intentionally targeted the roof sections connected to the remodeled area of the kitchen areas to address some of the issues with the remodel. The sections highlighted in green will be replaced next year. This will address the areas which may be negatively impacted by the construction work this summer. All work with hot asphalt is scheduled to take place outside of summer school hours. The roof replacement at Conan is located above the kitchen and cafeteria areas. The roof sections were deemed to be in greatest need of replacement during the annual roof replacement assessment law. Roof work will be completed during normal hours as Conan is closed this summer. The Shumber two-small roof areas have been identified in yellow will be replaced this summer as part of the health, life, safety work. Replacement in these areas will have very little impact on the use of the building with the work being completed outside of summer school hours. During our routine roof walk at the end of last summer, we identified some significant issues with the Palatine gym roof. The decision was made to address this roof before the roof failed, potentially causing damage to the wood floor in the gym or on the adjacent shelves. Roof replacement at Palatine includes the main competition gym and the shelf areas to the north and south of the main gym. This work will take place outside of summer school hours, and the gym will be closed when the roofing contractor is on site. Replacement of two large air handlers at Conan dating back to the 1960s. These units have served the majority, they currently serve the majority of the academic areas, and the new units will meet current energy and ventilation codes and will be more energy efficient. The current penthouse located in the middle of the west half of the school is not tall enough to accommodate the new area. The penthouse will also be extended upward prior to the replacement of the units. This is a significant project due to the location on the building. Friends will be on site several times during the project to locate equipment. We will also be replacing the two original interior-mounted air handlers which serve the auditorium with rooftop-mounted air handlers. These air handlers will have similarly be provided with modern controls meeting current energy and ventilation codes. We're taking advantage of the school being close for the summer and the economy of scale and having additional HVAC projects done at the same time. Roof replacements at Palatine, Fremd, and Conan will be completed this summer as previously discussed. On the agenda this evening for approval is an exterior concrete restoration contract. The stairs at Shumber High School's main entrance are in need of significant repair. The stairs along with the snow and ice melting heating elements will be repaired and replaced this summer, with at least 40% of the stairs remaining open at all times to allow access to the school. As part of the concrete restoration work, there are concrete coating repairs and concrete patching needed at Hoffman Estates High School near the handicap entrance ramp at the main entrance. This will not impact access to the school. Also part of the contract awards on the agenda this evening are the foundation repairs and painting at Palatine. The contractors will remove the paint from the full foundation, repair various sections of concrete, and repaint the foundation wall with a breathable paint. Discreteable paint should reduce the effects of the three thaw cycle within the concrete. This is very similar to work we have done at Hoffman Estates. This is very similar to work we have done at Hoffman Estates. For the bid status, if you look at the first two items on the list, you will see we made the decision to conduct an owner pre-purchase for the Frem kitchen equipment and HVAC equipment for Frem and Conan. It this time appears this decision was critical, as the equipment delivery dates for some of the pre-purchased items will be just ahead of the dates needed to complete the construction on time. It is likely we will have similar pre-purchased packages out to bid early this fall for the summer 2023 work. The interior projects and roof projects have been awarded, and on the agenda tonight are the balance of the summer construction projects. We're working with our abatement design professionals to get the abatement work out to bid shortly. This work is directly related to the restroom renovation and kitchen renovation at Frem.
Before we transition into 2023 planning, and I'm going to go back, I think there were a couple, John, do you mind talking about the parking lot? And then we have the life safety.
Oh, I'm sorry. So at Conan High School, we have gone out for bid for paving work, which includes the addition of a separation island between the bus lanes and the automobile traffic. This design was completed after a traffic study was done to watch traffic before and after school. We will be installing a traffic barrier island similar to the one at Hoffman Estates High School. This barrier runs north and south along the Plum Grove roadside of the building. We have worked with the engineers to make sure there is adequate spacing and re-strike some areas of the parking lot, make sure the buses have the proper turn radius to enter the bus lanes as they stage for pickup and drop-off. We met with our transportation team to make sure that this work were all and that we had buses out there to actually check and measure the configuration. As part of this, we will be replacing all of the asphalt in the parking areas in Cougar Trail. The full thickness of the asphalt will be removed. We will do soil stabilization. Once that is cured, we will go back in with new asphalt, so this will complete again all of the areas not done last summer outside of the stadium and some pathways. So the demountable wall replacement here at Palatine, as I discussed, we will be replacing those demountable walls. This is a two-phase project. The project was bid as a single project in that it'll be the same contractor doing the summer 2023 work as it is doing the work this summer. So that work is bid and in place for next summer as well. The roof replacement at Schaumburg is two small roof sections, as I had identified. Those were again addressed on the health, life, safety survey, and those will happen this summer. Replacement of the two cafeteria rooftop units at Frem will be done in conjunction with the cafeteria kitchen remodel project, as these were identified in life-safety scope. They are funded differently, however, it is all part of the one package. These rooftop units were part of the pre-purchase along with the air handlers at Conan. In addition tonight, on the agenda is a project to repair the precast walls at, here at Palatine, and as well as at Hoffman Estates, control joints and control joints here in the precast section of those. That work will continue this summer and is extirped in the building, so it will not
So while John just described a number of projects that are planned for summer 2022, which will begin in the coming months, we are anxiously awaiting that transition and at the same time beginning to plan for construction projects that would be scheduled for '23 and beyond. While the scope and timelines continue to be refined, the following slides will provide information on our future project considerations. Summer 2023 planning includes numerous projects identified in our 10-year plan. Locker room renovations are planned to continue with the next location scheduled at Conan High School. Renovations will include updated plumbing, plumbing fixtures, HVAC equipment replacement, new lockers, private showers, and changing locations, and improved ADA accessibility. We've completed culinary lab renovations at two of our schools, and a third renovation is planned for Frem High School, targeting summer 2023. The renovation will transition this space from a more residential-style lab to a lab that's designed to support both commercial and residential cooking. John just described phase one of our demountable wall replacement, and we are planning a second phase of those wall replacements in summer '23, again at Palatine High School in the math department. And then we will also have ongoing roof and mechanical equipment replacement, which will continue across the district to replace systems that are at the end of their life expectancy. Finally, additional routine maintenance and upkeep projects, including things such as paving, hammer replacement, LED lighting updates, and carpet replacement, will be continued throughout the schools on an estimated basis. Over the past several months, we have discussed utilization of a portion of reserves generated by the land sale and budget surplus to complete additional projects across our schools. The priorities that are identified include improvements to our auditoriums, replacement of our public address system, and addition of our air conditioning in uncool applied technology classrooms. As you can see here, the estimated cost for these project improvements is estimated at $18 million. These funds would be utilized from a portion of reserves that have been accumulated over the past two years as the results of budget surplus and land sale proceeds. All of the district's auditoriums are similar to the space that we are in tonight, but all have their own unique features and spatial challenges as well. One of the primary areas requiring improvement in our auditoriums is ADA access to our stage and seating locations. While each school has the means of access to the stage currently, students are often, who have accessibility needs, are often required to go out and around into alternate spaces to utilize possibly an elevator to access the stage. And one of the main features that we are looking at in the auditorium improvements is the ability to add accessibility means within the auditorium itself. Additionally, we are looking at the improvement of our current lighting and sound systems, which have become inefficient and more difficult for us to maintain. We would be looking at aesthetic improvements, including things such as seating, carpet replacements, curtain replacements, which are near the end of their useful life as well, and also additional acoustical improvements throughout, including panels and ceiling structures that would allow for better acoustics within the existing space. The estimated timeline for completion of these projects would be summer 2023 through the summer of 2026. Our public address systems are a critical component of our safety and communication systems across our schools. Our current systems are outdated and in need of ongoing repairs. Replacement of the existing system would include a new head-end unit, and new wiring is needed across the schools, allowing for communication both to and from classrooms. Conan High School has the smallest amount of updated work that would be required on the public address system, and while it is possible that we would be able to accomplish a portion of that this summer, we are targeting that the majority of this replacement work would be completed between summers of '23 and 2025. Numerous classrooms across our applied technology department are not air-conditioned at four of our five high schools. These classrooms are very difficult to regulate the temperature during the warmer months, with temperatures oftentimes mimicking outdoor temperatures in the warmfall months. It is not uncommon to have to relocate a class during those hot summer months to a colder area of the building. Additionally, these classrooms oftentimes house large pieces of mechanical equipment, utilized, as an example, in our manufacturing labs. We also have computer labs that are located throughout these classrooms, all of which are sensitive to the climate in which they are housed. We would be looking at replacement of HVAC units or to add new standalone units within these classrooms to provide the necessary cooling. The work would involve the rework and connection of our ductwork, new building automation system controls, and ventilation for specialized applied technology equipment that's housed again within these classrooms. As I mentioned, this work is completed at four schools. The classrooms at Hoffman Estates High School are currently all chilled, and we would look at an estimated timeline of summer '23 through '25. Consistent with the financial projection that was shared with the board in January, the district has included expenditures averaging $20 million per year in its financial projection for completion of these projects. These funds include those that are used to complete all three categories of our capital, including major capital, our life-safety projects, routine maintenance projects, and we also have included projects for the three considerations that were just presented. On the board agenda this evening, there is a recommended motion for the board to consider, which would authorize the district administration to move forward with additional planning costs on those three projects. Overall, we have been able to fund numerous facility improvement projects over the past several years, free of debt, and do so within our annual operating budget. And the projection that's shown here allows us to continue to be able to fund those projects through our means without any added debt. We, by the end of year five, with these considerations in mind, we have a fund balance of 39%. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. If you have any questions, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Palatine gym roof, do we know what the age of that was with the conditions these you found?
I can give the exact age for you, but it's about 30 years old.
Is it within warranty or not?
It is not.
Okay. All right. The Conan air handling, the capacity for those, is that based off the existing auditorium or proposed auditoriums?
The auditorium work that we're proposing does not change the footprint or add capacity of.
Right, but air handling units can be noisy and things like that, so I'm just making sure that whatever the proposed ventilation system, whether it's additional ductwork or shorter ductwork, that the air handling units won't have a negative impact on the facility. I hate to authorize an air handling unit that when they come to redesign the auditorium is no longer efficient or beneficial.
I understand where you're coming from, yes. They understand that it's for an auditorium. We are moving the air handlers up onto the roof, further adding vents and the ductwork, which helps reduce sound. The ducts will be lined, again, to help with sound attenuation, so we will make sure that every effort is made to keep the sound level down. In addition, the new air handling units are designed with frequency drives on the fan motors, so we will be able to control the fan speed to only produce the airflow needed to provide cooling, as opposed to some other systems that tend to run at 100%.
Okay, so you're saying if it gets noisy, you'll slow it down so that you don't hear that noise, and then lawyers in the auditorium will just have to handle that temperature in order to activate the acoustics, right?
The system should rarely ever be at 100%. If the system's running anywhere near optimally, we should never exceed about 70% of airspeed, so that would be a rare occurrence that we would have folks in that space with the unit putting out 100%, but even at 100%, we'd expect the noise to be well within reason for an auditorium space.
Okay, and then you had mentioned appeals at Hoffman's pool, is that right?
I'm sorry, what?
The Hoffman's pool work?
We're doing work here that is very similar to the foundation work we did at the Hoffman's pool.
Was that covered under the construction of the pools? As far as the warranty or any of that, as far as the builder's work went?
No, this has to do with the fact that the outside of the concrete walls have been painted with the standard paint, and that was long before any recent work. And so with the high humidity levels inside the pool, that drives the moisture much further into the concrete, and then as it gets cold, the moisture's freezing within the confines of the concrete. So with a breathable painting on the outside, the idea is to never have enough water load in the concrete to do damage.
Okay. And then with regard to the Conan parking lot, the number of stalls, is that reduced?
The number of stalls?
Parking stall, the capacity is.
I believe we, I will have to get a count, and I will get back to you. I believe we lose one row of parking at 12, a total of 12 parking spots.
So we're reducing the parking within the Conan parking?
Yes, but I will verify that number for you and give you that number.
Because, yeah, we don't have capacity now, and we use an overflow across the street and things like that, so we're reducing even further under this plan, okay?
We're keeping the bus lane width about the same as what they're doing now, so what we're adding is that eight-foot island.
Right.
So if we add that eight-foot island, that would.
We trade that for parking spaces.
One row of parking spaces, correct.
Can you explain?
No, no, nothing.
Can you explain why we're redesigning the bus setup more?
Yes, so the, we're installing this island with a fence running down the middle of the island to be able to direct pedestrians to two crosswalks that we're putting in. The crosswalks and speed tables are designed to slow traffic and also have a visual indication of where pedestrians will cross. So this is, again, very similar to the work that was done at Hoffman, with that barrier, and we're doing additional lighting on that island as well to improve safety.
And we're still, and the drop-off lanes are staying the same, right?
They will remain at 15 feet wide each, yes.
At the front entrance at door one, right? Because that's where the conflict usually occurs, the buses in the drop-off lane tend to be the.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the door number, but it's the Plum Grove Road entrance with around the glass.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. Thank you again for the tour. I had the opportunity to tour Palatine and have a preview of the presentation, so thank you guys again. And if my memory serves me correctly, the roofing, we're at about 3 million square feet, roughly?
That's about a million and a half.
A million and a half. And at some point, they're all going to be close or around 30 years old, which is way past any type of warranty work and work we could use.
So the existing roofs rarely have, back when these were done, would almost never have a roof warranty of over 20 years. The new roofs we're going on with do come with a 30-year warranty, factory warranty, that's not an installer warranty, that's a factory warranty. But yes, we have definitely gotten our monies out of our current roofs, and the idea is to replace enough roofs annually to keep up with the cycle, and also then not have a negative impact with a large lump sum 30 years from now when they are due to be replaced again.
Right. And then also, we all got to witness a fantastic bowler out of one of our schools, Ms. Benson, and we all saw how difficult it was to wheelchair her here on the stage and then take her back and run off to meet her family. So I really appreciate the fact that we're working to potentially upgrade the auditoriums of the school to accommodate students like her son. So thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, just a couple of questions related to, first, the ADA accessibility of the auditoriums. I appreciate the desire for round four access so that, you know, the ADA-compliant entrance is located in the same general area as every other entrance that currently exists. I think that's really important, speaks to what Mr. Bradley just said. I also see on the actual layout here, from slide number 17, when you're looking at the blueprint. I also see on the actual layout here, from slide number 17, when you're looking at the blueprint, there is a proposed lift location in addition to these entrances we're talking about, and I wondered if you would explain a little bit about what kind of lift we're talking about and what that lift will be expected to do. Is that to put somebody up to upper level seating, et cetera?
So this would be a lift to take from here at the front row, for example, up to the stage height. So it would be a single wheelchair-sized lift that would just make that 32- to 40-inch transition from the floor level to the stage level.
Would that require an administrator to operate, or can the person who exactly needs to use that lift be able to operate that themselves?
Generally, those have a key and push buttons to operate, so as long as they have the dexterity to operate them, they are self-service units.
Excellent, that was really important, thank you. And then the next question is about the cooling of the Applied Technology classrooms. I took one of the woodworking classes at Palatine High School, which I really liked and experienced the wild temperature fluctuations in that space firsthand. So, you know, I can certainly see the benefit of regulating the temperature in these spaces. We were also speaking, however, to the specialized equipment that's often in these spaces, and so like in woodshop, for example, you know, at Palatine High School, even though they didn't have cooling systems, they had a dust collection system, you know, for us to keep that off the equipment. So when we're looking at cooling in these other schools, is that going to include like dust collection and specialized, you know, air quality controls in addition to the temperature regulation for the equipment that's in these spaces? Or is that like a separate issue?
No, so the simple answer is yes. We are taking those things into consideration. The woodshop here, for example, we're right now adding a separate set of pre-filters to the intake for the return for the air handler to try to minimize future issues with dust getting into the system. Yes, the exhaust systems are taken into consideration when we design the airflow capacities of the air handlers. The air handlers are already set up to take outside air in right now, currently throughout the district. The outside air dampers are set at 30%. So we can either bring in that outside air through the air handler, or we can exhaust it through the air handler, or we can bring it in through the air handler and exhaust it through other pieces of equipment. One of the other pieces of equipment that we have and we're working on setting up ventilation for are laser cutters, for example, for the Applied Technologies. So the recommendation on those is someplace between 311 and 1100 CFM. And again, all those kinds of things are exactly what we're talking about as we talk about designing the systems for cooling, but also for active ventilation for the specialized cooling.
Excellent, thank you for that. My last question was about the upgrades to the PA systems. And it's, there's a special note here in the slide about those PA system upgrades that these improvements would make sure that the systems can operate independent of internet outages, telephone line outages. Could you touch on a little bit about why that's so important to have that?
Sure, so these intercom systems not only function as two-way communications or for general school announcements, but they also are part of our lockdown system, for example, right now. So to have those communications go on during a power outage or an internet outage are important. So as many of the modern systems are getting to be, the systems are IP-based, so very much like the rest of our computer network. So the design here will be for those pieces to be standalone. They will not reside on our computer network. It will be a separate, parallel network, and the switches and other devices needed to run that will be on a battery backup so that they continue to run. Now, the system is also designed to be connected district-wide, so administration has access to those systems essentially and can call in lockdowns from other locations and that kind of thing. That is, will obviously be based on the district's wide area network. However, from a building-level function, they're designed to stand alone, separate from the phone system, separate from the computer system, and from outside internet access.
Great, thank you. That was good for me.
Thank you, any other questions?
If you could elaborate a little bit more on that intercom system, because when you and I talked, and we talked about a, like a gun-preventing measure for the lockdown, and you had mentioned that you can always add on to that particular intercom system. If we don't have it today, it has the ability to always add different components and pieces to it.
So again, as these systems are becoming, you know, they were all pretty basic push-button systems when, you know, some of us were kids. Today's systems are all computer-driven, running on servers, running network applications, so they are able to take different inputs, from simple open and closed contact, on and off type inputs, to other communication pieces that are more sophisticated. So then we can program what that input is telling us and be able to report that out. So as it stands now, the systems are capable of having more than what we intend to do to start, and I am confident that they will continue to come out with more options as time goes by. This is pretty much the new end of the next series of intercom systems, and this is the latest technology. We are not writing the folk tales of 10- or 15-year-old technology.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for the presentation. And then that brings us to the consent agenda items. I have, Mr. Kramer has asked a couple of items to be removed. Letter B, letter C, and letter E. Does anyone else wish to have anything removed? All right, then with that, the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved with the remove, as presented with the, excuse me, with the removal of subject B, approval of bills for payments, subject C, financial report as of February 28, 2022, and also the removal of subject E, variance report as of February 28, 2022. May I have a motion, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all right. Any discussion on the items? On the items that have not been asked to be removed? Okay, now, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunkels?
Aye.
All right, and then that brings us to the approval of bills for payment. The recommended action is that the bills in the amount of $20,172,756.99 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I can't believe it took me three years to understand this part. Some questions. At the documents that we have here, the first page is check listings. What is a checklist? I don't know what a checklist is.
It is a listing of the checks that...
Can you put your... I can't hear you.
It is a listing of all of the checks that have been processed.
I can't hear you.
It is a listing of all checks that have been processed.
Those checks have been processed?
Yes, this is, and on page one, you have payroll checklist, that's the total of the payroll for that particular date.
Okay, so the bills have already been paid before the board has approved, is that correct?
Yes, this is the list of the checks that have been processed by date.
So if we've already paid it, why are we voting retroactively on something that's already been done? That's a rhetorical question. I think we do need to have an answer to that. And the following question is, is there a statute or a regulation which defines the amount of time that a school district has to pay a bill? In no way am I suggesting that we drag our feet in paying. We must pay in a timely manner, but again, I think we also don't need to spend the money until the board has approved this big expenditure of money. The second part is in the listing of accounts payable, checklist by ACH number and check number. I don't know what ACH number is, but it's a check. On one of the last groups, it's ACH check number 13653, the date 3/4/22, the vendor 10/582, vendor name forensic PC. The amount is $2,823.0. What was that for?
Sorry, Mr. Kramer, can you tell me what page you're on so I can follow you, please?
I can't hear you.
What page are you on?
I don't know, I just have one. It's toward the end of the listing, I just pulled.
This would be payment to forensic, our attorneys. The detail behind that, we would have to pull, and we would give you.
Superintendent, well, I cannot hear you nor understand what you're saying.
The payment to forensic is a payment to our law firm.
Okay, what services were performed?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can give you that.
Can you provide that information?
Can you repeat the information again so I can write it down?
Okay, so you, we can, we do have that, if we do, we do know that information is correct?
Yes, and that information has been requested by you before and provided in detail, and we can continue to...
Okay.
But I need the line item repeated of what you're looking at.
Just that one line item, that's all.
13, I'll repeat it for you, 13653 dated 3/4/22, forensic PC for $2,823.
Right, that... Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the process? Because the checks need to be prepared, and then what happened? The checks are prepared, paid, and presented to the board. And these are things that we basically have approved along the way, whether it's the salaries or payments for things, things of that nature. I would assume.
We haven't approved the bill for payment. That's the process.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, then I need a roll call, please. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunkels?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to letter C, financial report as of February 28, 2022, and the recommended action is that the financial reports as of February 28, 2022 be accepted as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I'll go through this very quickly. I have a lot of detail here. I tried to reconcile the variance report with the financial report. For example, in the variance report, we have in column one, actual funds fiscal year '22, actual, we have a surplus of $7,890,577. That's, is there an expectation that that surplus is going to come down throughout the year?
Are you referring to the variance report in letter E?
Yeah, I'm looking at the...
You're on letter C.
Okay, well, I'm trying to tie these together in an order which kind of makes sense.
I can have to provide an explanation of where the difference in...
Yeah, I mean, the question is, that's a fairly high surplus. Is there going to be, is that, is it going, is that surplus going to be lowered through expenditures? Or is it going to stay the same, or is it going to increase?
Yes, so let me back up a moment and talk about the statement of revenue, expenditure, and other financing sources. That is a comparison, what you're looking at there is the comparison of both revenue and expenditures for a period of time for this fiscal year relative to last fiscal year. So that shows you the difference there. On the variance report, what you are looking at is a comparison of our actual revenue and expenditures relative to budget for this fiscal year only. So the first one was against last fiscal year, this is this fiscal year. And again, it's only for the period through February, the end of February. As we've described, the district is, the vast majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. Those property taxes are received twice a year, so we have a large chunk of funds that are received, and we continue to spend those down. And then we get another payment, and we continue to spend that down. So you can see, actually, on page two of the financial report, you can see kind of how that, the fund balance, or the fund balance for our, just reacts to that change in pattern of our receipt of property taxes. So to answer your question, we did, we will continue to utilize the funds that were received, and we will continue to get, usually June is, the end of our fiscal year is the lowest point for us in our cash fund balance.
You're right, but I was asking about the forecast. Is it, we know what the revenue is going to be? Pretty close, and we should have a pretty close idea of what the expenditures are going to be for the rest of the year. Okay, not exact, but pretty close. So based on us knowing that information, isn't it possible to forecast where we will be at the end of the year? Plus or minus? I'm not asking for an exact number, but a trend. Is the surplus going to increase, stay the same, or is it going to decrease? You don't need to answer that question, but I think that that is something that needs to be understood. Then going to the, and this is a...
Okay, Mr. Kramer, can I interrupt? I apologize, but just for clarification, we're looking at this financial report as of February 28. So I think asking for something in the future doesn't meet the criteria for what...
There's a bad share of what I asked for. I'm asking for a forecast. We have accurate, accurate numbers for where we currently stand, but we know what we levied last year, so that's going to, and we know what revenue we're going to get, plus or minus. And we also know what the expenditures are going to be. So based on the variance report and some of the other financials, I think this far through the fiscal year, it is possible to make a forecast of about where we're going to be, not exact, is we're going to have an increased surplus, a decreased surplus, or about the same surpluses that we have right now? That's the question.
Fine, let's move on. Any other questions?
Okay, no, I'm not finished yet.
On this one, on the financial report, letter C.
You mean the variance report?
No, we're on letter C, that was the motion. Any other questions on the financial report as of February 28, 2022?
Yeah, the problem is, these things need to be taken in a logical order, so just bear with me. I went through the variance report as a starting point, and now I guess I'm back out of order, but we do things out of order sometimes.
No, we're trying to follow this, so, you know, please, please respect this. I'm respecting you.
Okay, can I talk about what's called the statement of revenues, expenditures, and other financial sources and changes in fund balance? Can I talk about that?
Which one are you on? Are you still on letter C, financial report as of February 28, 2022? Then please do.
Okay, right. A mechanical question. Is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and other financial sources current uses and changes in fund balance? Is this an Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. The question I have is this. If in column one, which is titled "All Funds Fiscal Year '22", if you take the total revenue of $1,772,467 minus $1,64,577, which is the expenditures, you come up with a surplus of $7,890,577. you come up with a surplus of $7,890,577, which matches what's on the variance report, as it should. However, in the second column, All Funds Fiscal Year 21, we have, if you do the same process of subtracting the expenditures from the revenue, there is a deficiency, as indicated here, of $5,338,782. That's a negative number. The fund, okay, now going down to the bottom of column one, All Funds Fiscal Year 2022, the fund balance at the beginning of the period, which is July 1, is $144,766,022. The fund balance at the end of the period is $152,566,589, which matches what's on the variance report, for a difference of a net surplus of what's above in surplus deficiency of $7,889,577. The numbers line up and they match. Let's go back to column two. If you subtract the fund balance, if you subtract the fund balance at the beginning of the period, as I did in column one, as you did in column one, from the fund balance at the end of the period, there is a $12 million surplus. The $12,402,053 does not match the $5,338,782. I don't understand why.
Yeah, what's unique in last year's, the column two that you're referencing, is that we also have the land sale proceeds of $17.7 million, which are added into the fund balance for the end of the period.
Well, I mean, what numbers do I add from the $12,402 to come up with the $5,338 deficit? Where is that calculated here?
The, I think your question is, we have 100, at that point, we had $151 million in revenue and $156 million in expenditures, so we had more expense.
I understand that. But my confusion is that all the numbers line up when you're talking positive numbers, okay, from column one, but they don't line up when you have a negative number. The fund balance has increased with the deficit. I don't understand.
Mr. Kramer, the $12 million plus the negative $5 million is basically if you paid the deficit using the land sale and put the balance of the land sale into the surplus.
Well, I'd like to understand what numbers I need to run against each other to explain the difference between the growing fund balance with the deficit.
Mr. Dobrowski, would you use the microphone passively? Mr. Kramer didn't hear you.
Sure. Mr. Kramer, I believe that the deficit, if you start with the negative $5 million from the report, and then if you add the proceeds from the land sale, the difference would be that $12 million surplus in the fund balance.
That's not here. There's not.
I think Ms. Hummel spoke to that directly.
Pardon me?
I think that was Ms. Hummel's reply, was that the deficit utilized land sales, and then the balance of the land sales went to the surplus, or the fund balance.
Well, you understand my concern, is that the numbers don't line because that piece of information is not on the report.
It's on the special.
The land sale proceeds is on the report. It is on the report.
In the column seven, okay.
It is on the report.
So you're cranking in the 17, 7, 4. Okay, I'll go back and do the math. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions then on letter C, financial report as of February 28, 2022? All right, if not, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Kettle?
Aye.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Funkwitz?
Aye.
All right, and then that takes us to letter E, the variance report. And the recommended action is that the variance report as of February 28, 2022 be accepted as presented. May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Kramer, anything else to add on this?
I do not.
All right, if not, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kettle?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Funkwitz?
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to our special reports. We have Freedom of Information Act request. That's an information item. Then we have the Illinois High School Association Letter of Appreciation, which is also an information item. And then that takes us to the unfinished business. And under the unfinished business, it's the resolution abating the tax recapture levy for 2021 tax year, and a resolution abating a portion of the tax levy for 2021 tax year. So we have two separate motions that we're going to be taking. The first recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the resolution abating $4,174,840 in the 2021 recapture real estate tax levy due to Section 18-233 of the Property Tax Code. May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Yeah, we just authorized the attorneys to go for the PTAB, basically to challenge any of our constituents that are seeking a property tax reduction. And this recapture levy is making us whole on prior rebates that we've issued. It seems kind of disingenuous to send our attorneys out there to bite the hand that feeds us, and then to kind of turn our nose up at the opportunity to have those funds that we lost through PTAB handed back to us through state legislation. It seems like we're not really acting in the best interest of the community when we challenge, when we challenge property owners that are paying property taxes. But yet, at the same time, you know, when we have those funds, we don't utilize those.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I disagree with that because the part that was left out is that intervening when relief is sought is in excess of $100,000. So we're not really talking about defending the little guy here. We're talking about big ticket property relief. And when that, when we intervene, and if it's not successful, or if we don't intervene, then, and that is successful, then that's redistributed on your average property taxpayer. So the burden actually goes up. So it makes no sense to me at all why we wouldn't abate, you know, we've been arguing since I've been on this board about, you know, whether we should abate and how much we should abate. And, you know, a lot of the arguments have always been from Mr. Dobrowski and other members have been, you know, abating as much as possible. And then we're going to thumb our nose at the ability to abate in excess of $4 million simply on principle that it doesn't compound like the other abatement that we're going to vote on later, when we, you know, the same issue, now that it's allowed by state legislation, is formally going to come before the board, you know, every single year, whether to abate this or not, because it's not subject to PTAL unless we abate more than the amount that's handed down to us in accordance with the state legislature, the law that was passed. So in short, I'm absolutely in favor of abating this levy. I'm really glad that we have the opportunity to do so. I think the state should have done something like this a long time ago, and I still think that the state should reform PTAL, but you'll get on my soapbox at another time when it's not wasting everybody else's time. So regardless, I mean, full support.
Madam President, I'd just like to remind this board that we represent the entire community within District 211, including property owners that pay property taxes in excess of $100,000. We do not get to choose, you know, winners and losers in this, and say that the loser should be somebody who has a tax burden of $1 million versus someone who has a tax, I'm sorry, I don't mean to say burden. I think I should say the privilege of paying taxes to our wonderful community. I think everybody is more than willing to pay their fair share when their assessments are correctly done. And if there is an incorrect assessment done, they have a mechanism to go through the county. It's not our place to, again, try to villainize people that are looking for a reduction of $100,000 or more.
Again, the theatrics serve to say that we're somehow intervening, of which you voted to approve almost every time in the past since I've been sitting on this board. So you haven't had an issue with it before. I can certainly understand if you have an issue with it. Now you're going to vote to disapprove of intervening in every other opportunity in the future. But regardless, it doesn't really change my stance. It's not about picking winners and losers. It's about whether or not we're going to abate a section of funds that the state has now given us permission to do and give back to the community as people have always, you know, as a lot of us have argued over the years, we want more opportunity to do. This is one such opportunity that's being presented to us, and I'm fully intent in support taking that.
I think the discussion around the authorization to intervene in proceedings for the Tax Property Tax Appeal Board should be had the next time that comes up before this board for vote, not at this time, because right now we're talking about the abatement. And again, we've had multiple discussions, many board members have had multiple discussions around abating money back to the taxpayers. I call that a refund. I don't know about y'all taxpayers, but I call that a reduction in your property taxes. And I'm all for any way that we're able to do that, perhaps without negatively impacting the programs, education, and well-being of our students. So I'm also very much for this particular abatement.
I think everyone has valid talking points. I would just like to summarize a little bit. Just to clarify that when we use the term abatement, it means a decrease in the levy amount, which in turn does help our taxpayers. They're going to be paying a little bit less. This was an option given to us, and I know as we've discussed, we've had conversation in regards to this. If we have some surplus funds, we've done things to help the community. We've waived student fees, we've reduced operating expenses. And I think it's also important that we became debt-free, resulting in more efficient operating. And the funds that we have do have to last us. I think we've been very cognizant of the taxpayers, all of our taxpayers, and by reducing this levy, by this basically $4.1 million, we're able to help the taxpayers. It is a minimal way, but we're able to do that. And I think that that's important, that we've come across that way.
Madam President, did we pass a levy for this amount, for the recapture levy? I don't believe it.
That was a board action.
We're doing this now. We're paying the Board of Education to decrease this, the resolution abating this amount. Did I apologize if I misspoke something?
I just wanted to be clear that this is, this levy, this abatement levy, is not an action that we took.
No, we have not. We've talked about a number of things, and this is something we've talked about in public here, about the possibility, about, you know, different ways of abating it, whether we should or we shouldn't. So we have had the discussion. Now we have the motion and the recommendation. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I know, I'd like to look at the long term rather than the short term. And this goes back to the previous meeting where we had seven different scenarios. The administration is sticking by scenario number one, and if it's true form, and as has been the practice by this administration and the school boards, is to tax to the max of PTAL, which is going to be 5%. That won't come until next year. So, and so scenario one, okay, and we're voting on part of that right now. The property owners will see a very modest, if not incredibly low, increase in their taxes of 0.3%. However, and that's dependent on the abatement of the regular tax year levy, along with an abatement of the recapture levy. That's what makes that possible. Looking ahead to next year, when we know what the CPI is going to be, and what the CPI is and what PTAL allows, which is 5%, the taxpayer will see an incredible jump, an incredible astronomical jump in their taxes, probably like they haven't seen in 30 years, which is going to go from 0.3% to 5%. It's unconscionable. So I'm torn between a bird in the hand, which is going to be a great outcome for the taxpayers, and hoping that something else will be done along the lines of scenario four, where we can reduce that 5% to something which is reasonable and palatable, such as in scenario three.
And that's, point taken, and that's a conversation that we'll have later on in the year in regards to that levy.
Well, we're setting the stage right now, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion?
Just to follow up, when you look at the seven scenarios, if you go through, and again, I spoke about this last month where I alluded to it. It's not a perfect measure, but I find it useful. You can just go through, and in each scenario is listed a number of things, including the increase to your average homeowner. And you can, that's projected five years ago. So that's provided for every single scenario. And if you want to know the cumulative financial impact of the various scenarios seen through that comparison, and we're talking about scenario one, which is the recommended action, we can see an average increase over that five years to $340, which happens to be the second lowest on that list. So every other scenario on that list, including the ones that have, you know, no recapture levy, or more sizable abatements, et cetera, all these things that we've discussed in the past, actually result in more of a tax increase to your average homeowner than the scenario that the administration has put forward, with the exception of one. And that is scenario, at least by my calculation, scenario number four, which I think was very briefly discussed in the communication provided to all of us. The administration did not recommend simply because of the way, the catastrophic and very fast way that happens to affect our ability to actually provide an education looking at our fund balances, et cetera. So that's all publicly available information, but I found it to be very interesting. So I know that we're arguing about the details, but that doesn't mean that regardless of the diverse points of view represented on this board, I do think, you know, all of us do care a lot about doing the right thing financially, balancing the interests of the community, and the taxpayer, myself, as all of us are, and also the ability to provide the kind of education that our community demands from us. So, yeah, so anybody who's interested can go in on the same kind of numbers that I did.
Can I reply to that, please? It's a little bit of a red herring, pardon the language there, to focus on increase to the average homeowner. We live pretty much in a guilded environment with the industry and commerce that we have. The taxes on businesses and the businesses that we have who pay very high property taxes is where, is one of the reasons why we can keep our property taxes for the homeowners at a relatively lower level compared to other areas that don't have the commerce industry that we have. When we raise, and again, we're looking ahead, based on history, at a 5% increase, that is going to really severely impact businesses in this area. And you know where they're going? They're going to Indiana, they're going to Wisconsin, they're going to Iowa because they can't afford their property taxes. Just be careful on what you wish for.
No, I understand. We certainly need to have a very robust discussion about that next year when it's actually before us.
December. It'll be this year.
Right, yeah, this year.
Well, I just want to say I really appreciate the additional conversation that this
Well, I just want to say I really appreciate the additional conversation that this board is having after three months of conversation, and I'm very grateful that we're finally at a point to make a decision and to vote on providing tax relief for our community who is suffering this year. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Then may I have a roll call, please? Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dabrowski?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Smithwood?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the second recommended action, which is that the Board of Education approve the resolution abating a portion of the taxes levy for the 2021 tax year in the Operations and Maintenance Fund in the amount of $3 million for a final 2021 Operations and Maintenance Fund levy of $30,962,000, and final total 2021 levy amount of $242,015,000, as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move discussion.
I think we should have done this in December. I don't know why we waited to do this via an abatement. We had the same discussion, the numbers haven't changed in three, four months. I have concern that, you know, we're trading 3 million today for 10 to 12 million in December. But I think that the annual surplus is a close to 7 million annually, you know, we are definitely overtaxing our community, and an adjustment to those levy amounts is overdue.
Any other discussion?
Good question. Based on the prior discussion over the capital, the 10-year capital project, which included 18 million dollars for extra stuff that we may or may not have been able to pay for without the COVID surplus, which is around 18 million dollars. So that money, depending on that resolution, is gone. Where is this, out of what pocket is this extra money coming from? Is this out of, is this a partial abatement of the 17 million dollars we got in the last year?
The abatement is designated out of the fund, we have to designate the funds, we have to designate the funds to the assessor's office exactly what it's coming out of, which is indicated in the motion. The 18 million that the board will vote on later was already put into the projections as it was presented to the board in the scenarios.
Okay, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't understand you. What I understand, based on what was discussed previously, the 18 million dollars was specifically stated to be out of surplus funds, and there's 18 million dollars in surplus funds over the last two years because of the COVID surplus. So that leaves 17 million dollars in surplus, which is about the amount that the land sale was.
If I may, during the presentation, we talked about the 18 million being from reserve funds. So our reserve funds are made up, when we were talking over the past few months about the reserves that we have, it's a combination of the budget surplus from the COVID years, as you mentioned, and the land sale proceeds. So the recommended motion that's in front of you is to abate the Operations and Maintenance Fund levy by 3 million, which is where the land sale proceeds are currently held.
So essentially, though, I mean, I'm talking high level, top line here, bottom line, we are essentially abating 3 million dollars out of 17 million dollars surplus or reserves, which leaves 14 million. What are we going to use that 14 million for?
The 3 million dollar abatement is a permanent reduction. So the taxpayer is going to see the benefit of this 3 million dollars if it's approved tonight, this year and every year thereafter. So when we're talking about next year and future year levies, the baseline amount by which that increase can occur will always be 3 million dollars less than it would have otherwise been.
It's kind of theoretical money, but I understand. Okay, I understand, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Smithwood?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to facilities and capital. Before we do that one, I would ask that if any board member has any questions in regards to anything that shows up in our board package, especially its finances, you know, please give Dr. Small or Ms. Hummel a call and let them know that that's coming so they can be prepared, because I know we want answers, and we have good questions, and they can prepare and answer those questions for us. So please do so.
Thank you.
What'd you say? To be prepared. Now I can hear, what? Mr. Kramer, what did you say? Okay.
It's, so just, we just want everyone to be prepared, and I think that's important, because they're all good questions, and I think it's important. All right, that takes us to facilities and capital improvement updates. The recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize administration to further engage its architects and engineers to prepare design and specifications for auditorium improvements at all schools, replacement of public address systems at all schools, and the addition of air conditioning in the remaining applied technology classrooms in four schools, and further that the projects be bid and presented to the Board of Education for consideration in future meetings over the next several years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I just want to thank those, I'm sorry, I just want to thank those who gave us the presentation today, it was very informative, and it will definitely be useful in helping us make a decision.
Madam President, my question is to this board, not necessarily to the administration. I thought we were holding off on utilizing any of the land sale proceeds until after we had completed the strategic plan, and I'm not aware of that decision changing to incorporate use of the land sale proceeds into any endeavor.
I believe we've talked about this, we've looked at the funding that we have available for us, and these are items that need to be done.
I do not disagree, but utilizing that land sale, I don't believe that we directed any use of that.
But I think this is more than just using the money that's in the land sale. It's money that's right there right now.
That may be the case. I guess my question for this board is, is that when we say that we want to hold off on making this decision until after the strategic planning sessions are complete, and then we don't follow through on that, where does this board stand with regard to what we're conveying to the public and what we're doing?
And these are items that we've talked about over the last couple of months when we've looked at this, and this is an opportunity for us to continue moving forward with.
I don't support doing this process this way. I believe that it's not transparent, and I believe that it undermines the trust that the community has placed in us.
Any other comments?
A couple of questions here. One basic one here. Number one, if we go through the suggested motion, are we committed to putting these projects in play? Once, and I guess, the project hasn't been bid when we do architects and engineers to prepare a design. There's some commitment, fun. The point of, I don't know where the point of demarcation is, is that once you solicit a bid of doing RFP, are you, do you have to accept the lowest possible bid? Can the board make a decision not to accept any bid, because we don't want it?
The second? Yes, the board can reject a bid.
Okay, so we can go through the process of the bidding, and at some point in time, if there's Armageddon and inflation goes to 20%, we can say we're not going to do maybe a lot of the stuff in the capital projects. Is that correct?
Yeah, the board can.
I'm asking you.
Yes.
You see it, Mark.
Yes, that is correct. But the timeline that was outlined this evening, the, for projects that would be considered for summer of 2023, which we had talked about, all three categories starting that summer, those projects would likely be, we would not bid them in their entirety, so auditoriums for all five schools, we would take the one auditorium that we are doing and bid that, the standalone project as an example, those would likely come to the board for consideration in the fall of 2022.
So the architectural and engineering designs will be done one at a time, not for the whole rest of the, from now, fiscal year 2027, one at a time? But we're not going to go out? Are we going to ask architectural, engineering, and design for all five auditoriums at the same time?
No, we would. They certainly are aware of our spaces, and we've had discussion about the project to understand what the scope would look like so that we could present it to the board. But certainly, when we are going to prepare the specs and design considerations for the bid, we would do one at a time.
Yeah, I'm looking for some wiggle room, obviously, I don't want to commit the board to something that may not even be feasible, depending on the economy. After, after a, after a huge increase in inflation, there's generally a recession, generally is, and may not, and the inflation and recession may in fact last a long time. Okay, so there's enough wiggle room there. We're not committed by adopting this resolution.
And the board has the discretion of doing that, and with more information, you make better decisions.
And I'd like to add to that, that during my ed read report coming up later, there is a House bill regarding bids on projects and purchases, that I'll be sharing a little bit more information during my ed read report.
Any other comments in regards to this?
I just have actually a question for you, Ms. Smithwood, because you were around or when I was on the board, I thought, through the last strategic plan process, speaking to Mr. Dabrowski's point, how did that strategic plan process affect this kind of planning for capital improvements and facilities upkeep? Did it set priorities? Was, you know, how did those two things tie together? Or if anybody else has a better answer?
Mr. Dabrowski was there also. It did set some direction. We took a look at what our assets were, what do we want to do with those things. It also looked at our values and how we want to address things within the school, the curriculum, education for our students, training for our teachers, college and career readiness, so things of that nature. And I believe that, you know, these are all things that we're continuing with in facilities and fiscal responsibility. So those are all things that we'll put into that strategic plan as we move forward with it. That whole setup was quite different because we had not done a strategic plan previously. There wasn't one. So I don't know, Mr. Dabrowski, would you like to add to it?
That summarizes a lot of it. Specifically, we wanted to make sure that any unused assets were optimized to the benefit of the district and the students. So anything that wasn't, you know, working in our favor, you know, that was a directive, was to try to eliminate that. You know, my impression was that we would hear from the community, figure out our priorities before allocating that 17 million, because that's the board discussions that we were having. I feel like we're silencing the community by moving this up.
And one of the things that was part of that strategic plan, the community did give us some recommendations, and they wanted to see that used for the students, whether it's facilities, any of those types of things.
Madam President, that's right, and when we asked the superintendent for uses, he solicited feedback from each school, and the superintendent at the time had summarized and even mentioned that some auditorium curtains were some of those needs that could have some of that allocation. Even a refund or, you know, a direct mailing of a check was discussed, but as a whole, as a board, I don't think we had spoken on that.
Thank you.
In the booklet that we had, there were a number of things listed there. I don't believe, I'd have to go back and take a look, that refunding, that was a discussion later on to one of the finance committees, but that was not originally it, if I recall correctly in that booklet. All right, any other questions? All right, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dabrowski?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Pass.
And Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Smithwood?
Aye.
I get a vote. No.
All right, I apologize, we probably need to do that vote again because I could not hear well. All right. Would you please repeat? Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dabrowski?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
I believe Mr. McGowan voted for me.
I'm reading it in the same way.
I believe he passed. I passed, Mr. McGowan did not pass. He voted for me. What was Mr. McGowan's vote?
I couldn't hear.
He didn't call yet this time around.
I didn't hear that. What was your vote?
He didn't act well yet this time around.
You passed, and then he was asked, and then you went back to you.
Oh, my God.
All right.
I pass. Someone else? What was Mr. McGowan's turn? It's Mr. McGowan's turn now.
With the day on which you called, Mr. McGowan. Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Smithwood?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Kramer? I get a vote. I passed, which means it comes back to me at the end. No.
So I would like to just say that though I actually support the projects that the plan has presented, I do agree that we should wait until the strategic plan process is completed.
Okay, the motion failed. I'm going to ask a question. What kind of impact does that have on our schools, our facilities, and that? What's kind of a timeline that we want to take a look at? If we come back and revisit this, possibly in June, July? So if it was revisited in June, and the board actually took action in June on it, that's when we would engage the architects and the engineers for the design support? And bring this back to us at that time? That would be the first step.
Okay. The timeline on it would also push back a year. Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question regarding it as well. So does that also improve the life safety projects?
No, the items that are on here for the auditoriums, for the public address systems, and for air cooling in the applied tech classrooms.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then that's going to take us to our proposed policy deletion. The recommended action is that the board policy, JED, student absences and excuses, be deleted as a board policy, further that the superintendent be directed to remove the policy from active status on board docs. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. This is back for a second reading. Okay, if there's no discussion, roll call, please? Mr. Dabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Kramer, aye.
Mrs. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Smithwood?
Aye.
All right, so then that takes us to the proposed policy deletion of JEDA truancy. The recommended action is that the board policy file JEDA truancy be deleted as a board policy, further that the superintendent be directed to remove the policy from active status on board docs. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call, please, Mrs. Cavell?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Klimtowitz?
Aye.
All right, and that brings us to the proposed new policy JEDB student attendance and truancy. Recommended action is that the board policy file JEDB student attendance and truancy be adopted as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All right, roll call, please. Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Ms. Klimtowitz?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to new business. And under new business, it is the auditing services for fiscal year 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025. The recommended action is that the Board of Education hire Baker Tilly US LLP to provide auditing services for fiscal year 2022 in the amount not to exceed $33,650. For fiscal year 2023, an amount not to exceed $35,340. For fiscal year 2024, an amount not to exceed $37,110. And for fiscal year 2025, an amount not to exceed $38,960. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I just wanted to point out that this recommendation is not the lowest qualified bidder, so I'm not necessarily sure how this benefits the community if there is a qualified firm offering to provide services for less, but we're simply making this recommendation because of our comfort level and a prestige that this auditor may have.
Lauren, can you speak to what we presented to the board on Friday in terms of the difference between the two firms?
Yes, this was not a bid, it was an RFP for services, which allowed us the opportunity to solicit proposals from several firms and interview several firms. We were able to assess the firm based upon their overall, several factors, including their overall size and their ability to service our needs, their access to resources and specialized services, their presence in the government sector with specific attention to school districts and school districts of a size and magnitude similar to ours. We had Mrs. Peterson and ISAP and interviewed three firms and through the RFP process, it is not only price, price is certainly a consideration, but we do look at the full scope, and that is where we landed on Baker Tilly. They by far have the most expertise and presence in the education market with clients of our size.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, first of all, I wish that the board would have been given a binary chance instead of a thumbs up or thumbs down, now because they're straight offs. But that said, was there any talk between the administration and Baker Tilly to perhaps a different structure in the contract, such as level payments for five years, which I wouldn't want to see happen, or perhaps a one-year trial, because we're changing horses, with if the board approves the work that they've been done, the manner which they've done it, that the next three years of the contract would be guaranteed as well? Was that brought to the table?
Madam President, I think that Mr. Kramer may be misunderstanding. Baker Tilly is our current auditor.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, they are. They've been our.
I thought it was somebody else. So we're keeping the same ones?
Right, that's in the write-up and the explanation in regards to it.
I thought it was them.
With the new firm.
My apologies. With the new firm, we also would have a new partner that would be assigned to the new contract, so there would be a transition in staff that would be assigned to our district.
Okay, any other questions? All right, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Klimtowitz?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The motion passed. All right, that brings us to topics for, potential topics for future discussion. I did get one this afternoon. It was from Mr. Kramer asking about the policy BCG School District Legal Council. Do you want to talk to that for a moment?
Well, let me read the policy. Pretty short, adopted July, came 2020, 20 years ago. An attorney, plural S, in for instance, shall be selected annually by the Board of Education to serve as legal advisors to the Board of Education and Superintendent. The attorney shall perform only such services as requested by the Superintendent or designated by the Board of Education through the Board President or designated, and not at the request of any individual ordinance. The Board of Education retains the right to consult and employ other attorneys on matters of special concern and to terminate the services of any attorney. We're not following the policy. I've been here for three years, I haven't voted on selecting an attorney.
And that's a policy that we really should take a look at because it's over 20 years old and I would agree, let's present it to the policy committee and let's take a look at that, unless anyone has any objections to it. Okay, there. Yes, sir.
I think that we should comply with the policy because the legal precedent by Illinois Code of Schools 105, 1021 hasn't changed. So the basis for the policy has stayed consistent, unless I'm misunderstanding, Madam President, why you would think that the policy committee would come to a different conclusion.
I think we need to take a look at that. I know you had asked the question previously, and I think we need to gather some information in regards to it, whether there is a contract that's done with attorneys, or is it something where you, an actual contract, some type of agreement, or do we have, I don't want to say verbal, but I guess, you know, because we hire certain firms to do certain things.
Well, since this board has been seated and prior seating with Mr. Kramer myself, I don't believe that we have brought the board our attorney for hiring, if you will, according to this policy.
We utilize some different attorneys, maybe for the special ed, for the workman's comp, and for negotiations and some other legal matters.
Do not disagree. The policy just simply says that we have to take a vote in open session as to who our attorneys are. I mean, the rectification could simply just be at the next meeting, we bring our current attorneys before the board for authorization of use.
Or that the policy is really old and it should go to committee so we can look at it and see how it can be approved, and then take the vote that you want.
Well, or seeing as the policy says annually, a year from now, we review who we currently have as our attorneys, make a decision whether or not to continue with them.
But we didn't do it a year ago, so we're behind.
Right, I don't have the time sheet, so we can't go back to the past.
Yeah, it's much more, it's much more complex than just changing or working out the policy because I don't know how we operate. That was a purpose for my question about, this is forensic, what's the bill for? Okay, we have no operating. I don't know what they are.
I guess the thought is that this should be done annually before we make the decision to review our current attorney relationships. We need to have time to consider what our current agreements may be with the various firms that we use, why we're using them, what their rates are, what the relationships are, and we need to have time to be able to do that. And since it says annually, we need to designate a time, and it could be anywhere between now and a year from now because that would be annual. It could be six months from now, it could be next month, or it could be at the end of the fiscal year.
Well, we haven't done it for long, so it would be more than a year, but I agree with the impression.
I believe we did. I'm sorry.
Is the motion for us to discuss, is it a future meeting?
It's not a motion, it's.
We're working to make an motion.
To discuss it, yes.
Because we're talking about the policy now.
Yes, and that's what I'm trying to get across to everyone here. So if you'd like us to bring it back, we can take a look at this as a policy and gather some more information, because that's what we need before we make some kind of decision.
It's much more complex because we may need to adjust the policy, but we need to have, the board needs to know how this actually operates. I have no idea.
And that's what I'm trying to get across to you. Let's allow the administration to get some more information for us so we can make a decision.
Yeah, and so that involves a presentation to the board so we know what we're talking about before we even tackle changing the policy. The policy may not need to be changed, we just need to know how this thing operates.
Well, the policy is 20 years old, and I think a lot of things have changed, legal issues, things of that nature, and I think we need to take a look at what is the typical policy with attorneys.
I agree, so step one is to understand that. Step two is to revisit the policy.
So let us get the information, and then that will be presented to us and we'll be able to.
We are, we are integrated.
Great. All right, so we're good there? All right, thank you. Wow, let's see.
Madam President, we also have some new business. I did send an email to you about a week ago asking regarding our protocols and our social media use. I'd like to put that on for new business.
Okay, I apologize because I didn't recall receiving that, so I do apologize to you.
It's, I know it wasn't today or recent, but it was prior. I believe you had suggested you would put it on the agenda, but since it didn't make it onto the agenda, I suggest we put it on new business.
Okay, and I apologize, we did have a discussion in regard to.
And you had informed me that you had added to the agenda, obviously that did not occur, so I am suggesting that we put that on our new business.
All right, reviewing our protocols.
Protocols and our social media and specifically our ethics policy, BBF. I believe that needs to be revised.
BBF?
BBF.
Okay. All right, is anyone opposed to that?
Hang on, I'm going to look at the policy.
BBF?
BBF.
Okay, so we've got what looks like ethics. So you wanted protocols and ethics?
Correct. I think they go hand in hand.
I feel like it was the three things, is there?
No, the social media is under the protocols.
Yep.
Right. And then BBF is just the ethics related to how we operate as a board.
All right, any concerns or is that okay? All right, then we will do that.
Thank you.
All right, then that takes us. All right, then that takes us back to our committee reports. Let's do those. I have NSSEO, and NSSEO, we had our meeting over at Timber Ridge School. We had the ribbon cutting for the gymnasium there at Timber Ridge. We had an assortment of students that were there. They were very excited to have a gymnasium that they could utilize. These are students who have some, you know, social emotional challenges, some behavioral challenges, and it was very important for them that they've been recognized and they have something that other schools have, getting that gymnasium. And that took a number of years to be able to do that. We also recognized some shining stars. We had two students that are District 211 students, a ninth grade student and a 10th grade student. They were both from the Kirk campus, and they were recognized for outstanding growth in areas of independence, problem solving, and vocational skills. Both of these students were involved in the transition action planning, the tap process of giving them some outside experience of some work skills and developing those. The one young man, he started at Kirk this year and is doing very well, and the other young man, he was there since the fall of 2020. So that was, they were very happy to be there. We also talked about the goal number four that they had for NSSEO, which is the transition services, and they're looking at a renewed focus on the services, you know, accessing a wider array of assessments, being able to take a look at the needs of the students and what the abilities are, intentionally selecting assessments to obtain specific information, you know, making the necessary accommodations for our students, and having some of the various teams that support the students and help them move forward. The parents, the guardians, and caregivers are all receiving training to support the partnerships that are out in the community and within the school. There's the Kirk Center, the Parents for, we call it Kirk, the Parents' Enrichment Resource Center, and it reaches out to various, it reaches out to the families that have students at Kirk. So far, they've held 10 events, which is really great because parents with children that have special needs really do need that extra support. So they've been doing that. Dr. Hackett is appointed to serve on the Illinois State Advisory Council for the Education of Children with Disabilities. So with her being on that, I think it adds an extra voice of children with disabilities and hopefully some fuller funding for students with disabilities. So that was NSSEO. That takes us then to EDRed, please.
Well, I would not be, it would not be proper without first commenting on the Timber Ridge Gym Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. I was also able to attend, as were some other staff and administrators from our district. I have to tell you that we have a rising star in our district, and that is our Board President, Mrs. Anna Klimtowitz. She not only represents District 211, but she is a leader, a leader in NSSEO on their board, and the impact and difference that she makes in the lives of the students and their families, the major responsibility and leadership role that she played in the design development, building, and opening of this gym at Timber Ridge School. I was amazed and opened my eyes to the role that this woman plays in that organization. So I know that they're very thankful and I'm very thankful, and they are very privileged to have you as part of that organization. And I was honored to be part of District 211 at this ribbon cutting ceremony and to have Anna as a leader in the entire program that they had going on that evening. It was truly an honor, so thank you very much. Very well deserved. Okay, EDRed report, not as exciting as the ribbon cutting was that evening, it was really splendid. So EDRed had their last meeting on March 4th, I attended. State Senator Adrian Johnson was the keynote speaker. She spoke about a lot of things that she gave us a legislative update, and she also talked about some things that she's involved in. She represents a far north district, including Buffalo Pro, Lincolnshire, Bourbon Hills, up that way. She's also an environmental champion. She's been involved with coal ash removal versus capping it and protecting waterways and sources and things like that. So she spoke about some of the things that she's been involved in. I'm going to skip naming the number of the Senate bill or. I'm going to skip naming the number of the Senate bill or House bill, but rather just talk about it for a moment. There's a gender equity bill about being, having a gender equity advisor to the Governor and ISBE to ensure educational equity, so she's been involved with that. Also, there's been a Senate bill about waiving student fees for veterans or active military where their fees would be, their school fees would be paid if they're less than 200% of the poverty level. And there's a lot of people who are veterans or active military that fall into that category. Oftentimes, military move from less costly areas into the Chicago market, and we know what our cost of living is here compared to other places maybe across the country, so it really helps them a lot. Also, I mentioned earlier when we were talking about the bidding process, there is a bill going through that's proposed and is moving through different stages about not just accepting the lowest responded bid on things, but it's looking at value to the district, and this is statewide. So we wouldn't have, if this bill passes, we wouldn't have to accept the lowest bid. We can not only evaluate the cost of the bid, but the value of the bidder and the service or the product that we would receive from the bidder and take that into consideration in deciding which bid to accept, right? So a lot of school districts are very excited about this because the lowest bid is not always the best bid, right? It could be the lowest bid and the product, you know, the quality of the service that they would provide is not what the district really needs, or the community really needs, or our students really need. So there's a bill going through about that. Some other updates, there's a bill going through both the Senate and the House, and it's currently on hold in both regarding changes in tenure for teachers. For instance, if teachers evaluate a certain way, the better evaluation could reduce the amount of years it takes for a teacher to get tenure, okay? And also tenure for a teacher moving from one district to another and how that evaluation would work for them to get them on the tenure track a little bit quicker, but that's currently on hold. There's a House and Senate bill passed the Senate, it's under rules review, and it's on hold in the House for giving teachers mental health days. We give students mental health days, so there's some legislation to perhaps give that also to the teachers. There's a Right to Read Act to create a culture shift to evidence-based literacy practices by providing a guide for districts from ISBE, so that's currently going through as well. And there was also a resolution from IASB at the Delegate Assembly around reading tests for teachers to be certified, and there has been discussion, and in fact, it was brought up at the EdRed meeting, about reciprocity concerns and the impact that these tests would have on minorities and things like that. So they're trying to do some evaluation on the longevity and implications of that. Again, the tip and key teller horn bill, no change. Senator Gillespie is a big sponsor of that. Perhaps we'll see some more about that in the next session. There's talk, and I mentioned this last month, about the five-year recapture bill for tax levies and changes to that, it passed the House, that's the update on that. COVID employee benefits and wage protection, the bill is passed the House, it's a waiting Senate assignment that would indicate that in order for employees to take advantage of those benefits, that they would have to be vaccinated. So that's going through at the state level. I mentioned the best value dinner, special education residential placement shortage, there's some bills around that, we've talked about that before, and guaranteed energy savings projects, there's a House bill working on that as well. So EdRed is having their 50th legislative dinner on Monday, April 25th, and I'm registered to go to that. It is actually rescheduled for an earlier date that was canceled, and the meeting is scheduled to include a panel discussion on social emotional learning, so it should be very interesting. And the next EdRed meeting is April 1st. That's a lot. Okay, that's my EdRed update.
Couple of quick questions to add. The EdRed is in support of the mental health days but used as sick days, correct? Not as a separate days, was that their position?
Sorry?
EdRed's position on that was that the mental health day should come out of a teacher's sick days and not be carved aside as additional days for mental health?
There's legislation, there's actually two, there's a Senate bill and a House bill that are working their way through, they didn't go through specifics about where those days are going to come from.
Right, but our participation and the position of EdRed is that we're opposed to five additional days on top of the sick days, correct?
Well, that would be our district's point of view, yes.
Okay, just clarifying. And then was EdRed party to the utilization of students that are in teaching, that are going through, that are college level being substitutes?
That wasn't discussed at this particular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the Community and Family Services Report. Mr. Dobrowski or Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, I missed that meeting.
Okay, do we have an administrator that was? Uh, not, pardon me. Okay, all right, then that takes us to the Equity Report. I know I was not able to participate with my group this past, I think it was this past Monday. Mr. Bradley?
No.
All right. Mr. Schumacher, is there anything that you can add in regards to it, maybe give us an update on the Youth Equity Forum?
Sure. So we hosted a Student Equity Forum on Monday, February 28th. Thirty-five students from all seven schools across the district participated with their staff sponsors. We did three main activities. The first was that each school shared their areas of focus as it pertains to equity, the accomplishments of their student teams, and their upcoming plans for the rest of the school year. We engaged in some cross-district discussion groups where students from all schools were able to sit collectively together and speak up, speak, and then we participated in action planning for the beginning of the next school year.
Okay, thank you. All right, Facilities and Building Safety Report. Mr. Bradley, anything further that you'd like to add?
No, nothing besides the report I was given.
Okay, thank you. All right, that'll take us to Parent Connections and Communications Report. Ms. Campbell or Mr. Dobrowski?
Sure, I participated, I actually was able to tie in on my phone until I lost sound, but I caught probably a good two-thirds of it. I want to express a significant appreciation of both Dr. Small and Ms. Holmes for facilitating a wonderful discussion regarding the use of the district website and how parents are looking for information and whether information should be pushed or static and calendars and even down to the details of the scrolling archive. It was a very comprehensive discussion and I'm sure there was valuable feedback that was acquired, so excellent job by Dr. Small and Ms. Holmes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Student Wellness Report. Ms. Campbell and Mr. McGowan?
We have had a meeting since the last update.
I apologize.
We have not had a meeting since last one.
We did have a student, another student forum, and Mr. Schumacher, can you go through that?
Sure, so we also hosted a Student Wellness Forum on Tuesday, March 8th, where a different group of students of similar size came together from all seven schools. And again, several activities, they went through, number one, again, they shared their school areas of focus, accomplishments, and their upcoming plans from their wellness committees. They participated and heard a presentation of the history of wellness in physical education in District 211. They reviewed the payroll and the survey results from their schools, and then they discussed the concept of what is a trusted adult and what is sense of belonging to their school communities, and then also did action planning for the upcoming ones.
Question for you, are the contents of the outcome of the recommendations provided to parents from that committee for school?
That committee does not give recommendations per se, they're working within their school communities and their student bodies to host events and discuss what actions they want to take place as students.
Is there a way that the parents could be informed of what their children are saying about their wellness?
I'm happy to bring that to them, sure. I mean, I'm assuming they do talk to their parents about it, but if you're talking about a formal way, then I'm happy to bring that suggestion to their teams.
Well, it's a group effort, it's not individual, so. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then takes us to the Strategic Plan Steering Committee Report. Mr. Campbell, would you like to?
Yeah, the last one was pretty interesting. I got to tell you, the process is pretty well defined, it's pretty compact, they actually start on time, finish on time, and accomplish a lot because of the facilitator. The, I will tell you that my experience is that the people participating in the steering committee, looks like it's smaller than it was before, are very focused and very dedicated and committed to the process. They are now doing something which is going to be difficult for them. They are now in the process of starting over the next couple of three weeks, having Zoom focus groups of two or three at different varieties, up to 30 people, and they want to get through it in 45 minutes. I think they're going to finish that by April 8th, and we have a special board meeting scheduled for the 14th. I don't, and that's, that may or may not be premature because we're not going to have a consolidated recommendation from what, from the works being done right now, so I guess we're going to kind of get a
It will be ready by the 14th.
Oh, I know, but the whole, the whole recommendation will not be ready, my understanding.
That's correct. So in the, at the April meeting, that's when the board will start to look at the details behind the mission and the values and the priorities and the feedback. It continues on at the
So we're, so our point is going to be beginning where the Strategic Steering Committee has completed their work to date. And then there's another step, which would be for the consolidation and the recommendations, so that's later on in what, May or June?
Right, we're going to be meeting, what was it, the 14th that we're meeting, we're having our special meeting to take a look at the mission, the values, and also to look at the priorities that were discussed at
Yeah, and
With the feedback, with the feedback, the Strategic Steering Yes.
I've talked with facilitator a couple of times, one-on-one, I sit at the table and I don't say anything because I don't want to, I'm there to listen, I'm not there to influence what the group is saying. And I'm glad to see that the focus groups are aligned by school, not sort of a focus group of the whole, across school, and what I'm hoping that we're going to see is different strategic planning by school as opposed to a homogenous, one-size-fits-all, so I hope that that's where we're going to be going. I think it is, but we'll see from what comes out of this. You know, how we operate a PRIM, or the needs of students at PRIM are probably different to the needs of students at Calatine.
And yes, the, I think, you know, we talked about the mission, they looked at the values, and just phenomenal people that are part of it getting themselves ready to do the Zoom focus groups. They would have, you know, a person that was facilitating, somebody record keeping and somebody timing, so they can get the input from people and they would be as mutual as they possibly can in getting that information. They also gave us a handout that's going to be shared with the focus groups about the priorities. We've already approved the academic priorities, we've got the goals listed, we did that as a board, so they're aware of that, they're taking a look at the indicators in regards to it, they're also taking a look at the priorities such as, that we currently have, you know, post-secondary success, excellent staff, wellness, facilities, and finances and communication. So it will be interesting, and the gentleman who is facilitating, who's leading the group, is extremely good at presenting information and soliciting feedback and summarizing.
Keeping it group focused.
He does, he does, he does a very good job, so I think we'll be on task and we'll have information from him and he'll help guide us through that as we move forward. Okay?
All right. Before we get to announcements, I apologize, I wanted to bring this up before. Dr. Small, could you please follow up with myself and every member of the board about the situation regarding the app development class that we've heard about in public comments? So I would like your response from that to all of us. Thank you. If you do.
I think there might have just been a missed communication. I do believe that the last email from Mr. Schumacher stated that the district would be happy to work with them if
I read that to you, I still want to follow up, thank you. Yeah, because I think, you know, that was important, we have a number of students and their parents who gave us both in regards to that. Okay. All right, so we do have our announcements, there's an upcoming event.
I have some other announcements.
Yes?
I would like to encourage, I know as a board we get a list of upcoming programs and the events sent to us from this administration, and we're allowed to sign up for them, right? Like for the balance of the year, these are the concerts, these are the different programs that are going on, they could, there are a variety of different things, some of which require, or they're strongly requesting a board representation for, if it's a ceremony or something that they would like a board member to be present for, but there's also other things like art programs, right, performing arts programs and the like that our students are doing. I know there's also, the business programs have their pitch night, so there's all kinds of things that this board has an opportunity to attend, right? Whether your student is participating in it or not, I'd like to strongly recommend because we have some extremely talented and hardworking students and staff in this district that work on these programs, and I know, I encounter several of you attending them, but I really think we should do as much as we can, based on our schedules and interests, to attend and participate and acknowledge the very hard work that goes into putting these programs together. Some examples are, my wife and I volunteered to serve three meals for Operation Snowball at Schaumburg High School on February 26th. We've been a supporter of that program for the last eight years, it's a wonderful program, and I just heard yesterday or the day before that Conan is having a mini snowball. I haven't heard anything else about that, but I think that's great. I know I went to see Joseph, and I went to the District 211 Honors Band concert, and I know some other board members here have gone to sporting events and concerts as well, so I'd like to definitely encourage everybody to participate and show our support for what we have going on in the district.
Yes, I think that it's really important to be out there because we want to see what our students are able to do and let them know that we truly support them. The District 211 Honors Band was just amazing, they were absolutely phenomenal. It was, it was just, it was just truly amazing, and the guest conductor was amazing, all the time and talent that these kids put into it was just phenomenal.
And to that point, I just would like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Morehouse, who is doing a concert tonight at Conan, which I'm missing to be here, or which I'd have missed, I'm sure the kids are home sleeping by now. But to Mr. Rosenbaum's point, you may not know I'm there, but I'll be there. I don't like to sign on and then something comes up and there's an empty seat where people are expecting you, so, and that's why I
Good, and I know people do come out. I know Mr. McGowan and Mr. Bradley were over at Calatine here with Black History Month, and I know that the students really appreciate being able to speak with you and your willingness to be here, and that's meant a great deal, so I think that's really important. So yes, it is important for So yes, it is important for us to be out there. All right. With that, let's finish up some of the other action items that we have. The next recommended motion is, recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Penny Pappas effective December 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
Showed.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McAllen?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinflous?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that effective April 18th, 2022, Alex Legre be appointed as Buildings and Ground Manager at Hoffman State's High School at a gross salary of $98,000. May I have a motion, please?
Showed.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinflous?
Aye.
Next recommended action is that employee Linda Zydek be suspended for three days without pay. Further, that the Board Secretary notify said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
Showed.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinflous?
Aye.
Next recommended action is that employee Lisa Zaruchis be suspended for three days without pay. Further, that the Board Secretary notify said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
Showed.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinflous?
Aye.
All right. And with that, there is no other business to come before the Board, so the Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.